Everyone to the meeting of the select board for Wednesday, April 6, 2022. This meeting is being held remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and it is being recorded and broadcast by Milton Access Television. We had hoped, we had previously announced that we would be back in person, but due to the large number of meetings occurring this month, Milton Access Television has asked us to stay on Zoom during the month of April, and we were happy to work with them. We know how busy they are, this four or five meetings tonight alone. So so this is a virtual meeting this evening. My name is Katie Conlon. I'm the Chair of the Board. Could we all introduce ourselves, please?
Altha Doyle, Vice Chair.
Zulus Secretary.
Melinda Collins, member.
Richard Wells, member. I am on my phone, but I will be switching over to my computer in about 10 minutes.
Okay, great. And we're joined this evening by our Assistant Town Administrator and Human Resources Director Paige Appolito, who's sitting in for the Town Administrator, who's unavailable this evening, and also Lyndon Appleby at the Select Board Office. And we're also joined by the Finance Director Karen Paval. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone would join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll get our flag up on the screen. Due to the number of meetings, we may not have our flag, but let's let's start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it is one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you all. The first item on our agenda this evening is public comment. Do we have anyone this evening for a public comment? If so, please raise your hand, and we will recognize you in order. I see no hands raised at this time, so we'll just wait another few seconds. Anyone has a public comment this evening? Okay, then seeing none, we're going to move on to our next item, which is a discussion with our 360th Committee Tree Initiative, and we're going to move John David Corey over from attendee to panelist. I'm hoping you can help us with that. We may, so the board knows, we may have a few items to move around this evening. We have Karen Paval, who needs to get over to the Warrant Committee at some point. And and I understand that Sean O'Rourke, the Chair of the School Building Committee, is at the Warrant Committee and will be joining us a little bit late, so we may need to move some of these items out of work. Right, so good evening, Mr. Corey, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me, Chair and other Select Board members, John David Corey, and I'm not officially a member of the STACK team, but I've been co-chairing the Milton 360 fundraising effort in honor of Milton's 360th anniversary, and my co-chair is also the Chair of STACK, Laura Beebe. She's actually running the STACK meeting right now at Town Hall, and then I'm joining you guys via Zoom. I also think Carol Stoker, who's a member on our on STACK, she may be on the audience. I don't know if she wants to be promoted, but I'll be quick. Basically, a quick update, we've raised to the Milton 360 Shade Tree Campaign as of April 1st, $87,000. And we got a very sizable donation from the Copland Family Foundation, as I mentioned it several months ago, for a very substantial $50,000 to go towards shade trees in the town. And we also received a recent donation of $5,000 from the Gardening Club. So two really special groups, and they showed their support. So I'll be, I'll, we've been fundraising, and we're kind of closing that campaign. We're starting to think about our ribbon cutting and our tree planting and sort of closing the campaign, and we've earmarked June 4th at 10:00 a.m. And we have, the STACK has talked about this, and we'd like to see if we can plant a white oak tree in honor of the Milton 360 campaign, and we could have a ceremony at 10:00 a.m., maybe just have like coffee and water and some pastries, and up at the town green, and have the press, and sort of make it a very small, but important sort of closure to the campaign. And we thought about a white oak. I've done some research on it, and we, our group has, and it's the number one species for insect biodiversity. They can live about 500 years. They're native to New England. I mean, you look at the old maps of Milton, and sometimes even says the corner of a lot is the property line is the white oak tree. So I thought, you know, very fitting for Milton. So we're hoping for the Select Board's support for June 4th at 10:00 a.m. on the town green, and the Department of Public Works to certainly choose the location for the tree. That's not that critical for us.
Right, thank you, Mr. Corey. Did we want to have Ms. Carol Stoker move over? Is there something that she needs to brief the board on as well?
I don't think so. If she's around, that's fine, but I think that in sake of, for the sake of time, I think we've said enough. Thank you.
All right, well, Carol has her hand raised now, so I was just about to say if she wanted to add something, she could raise her hand. So why don't we move Carol Stoker over?
I would like her to say something.
And and in the meantime, as you know, we're going to have a new board before June, later on this month. So we'll want to coordinate with the members, the three members who will be continuing on the June 4th event. And and some of them may want to speak to it, too.
I just want to say that, because this is Carol Stoker, that that John David Corey has really spearheaded this 350 Milton Tree Initiative, and he deserves a lot of credit. He's been just very effective, so I just want to send a kudo out his way, and it's well deserved.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you joining us this evening.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you spoke.
Sounds like you have a Shade Tree Committee meeting going on at the same times that we're joining us. All right, does any member of the board have a question or a comment for Mr. Corey or Ms. Stoker? Or any discussion of the plans for June 4th? Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick question. I was switching computers when where is this tree going to go? And what is the purpose of this tree? I didn't, I only heard the tail end of this of Mr. Corey's remarks, which was the date. I didn't hear what, what are you?
Chair, can I respond to that?
Yes, Mr. Corey.
Okay, so it's just basically a way for us to close the campaign officially, and STACK got together and discussed that white oak would be a very fitting tree for the town. It's native and one of the biggest biodiversity harbors, I think, 560 butterflies. And it, we would work with the Department of Public Works on any place, really any place around Town Hall. We thought it was important to have it near Town Hall. We prefer to have it kind of at the ring of the town green, but it really could be anywhere depending on DPW's opinion.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for your work. I'm good. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on the board? If we could delegate this to the Town Administrator and the Public Works Director and get their input into the location and have them come back to the board with
It's a very good idea, Madam Chair.
Additional proposals. But yes, I agree that it's a great idea and very generous of the 360th Initiative. All right, if there's nothing else for Mr. Corey, then nice, you know, hands raised. So so, Mr. Corey, thank you so much for joining us. Ms. Stoker, thank you for joining us, and we appreciate all of your efforts. That's a wonderful amount of money to raise for something that, for a long time, we often had trouble funding through the budget trees, and
And I'll just give a shout out for Mr. Berkeley. He's been an amazing partner to work with. And just real quick, we've been, he's asked us for help on locating tree locations, and we've been going, we've been, members of the committee have been driving around looking for vacant locations. We have been promoting on our Facebook page, the town's ability. So if the residents are listening, you can go onto the town's webpage and request a shade tree for your front lawn, and it will, if it's plantable, the town will come out using these funds and plant it for free for you. We're using that, and we're also going, we have, one member studied the GIS maps from the town, and we're using Tree Equity Index of some sort, and we're trying to find streets that have less trees and targeting those as well. So I'll just, a plug for that.
Well, that's great. We used to have the designation Tree City USA, and then we lost it for a little while, and we got it back again. So so it's wonderful that we're taking this on, and that this group has come together to fundraise, so. Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Corey. Thank you, Ms. Stoker. All right, we have, we've already moved up our town moderator Bob His to panelists, so we're on to number five. And then number six, A, I think, one who Bob joined us for as well, which is the annual town meeting dates. Good evening, Mr. His. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Pleasure.
So number, item five is a discussion of the March 2022 special town meeting, and the night of six is the annual town meeting dates. We may want to talk about any ideas that Mr. His is working on in terms of the in-person meeting for for May. But first, we thought we would have, I think we called it a kind of a breakdown session of the March 2022 special town meeting from a few weeks ago. So I appreciate the moderator coming in this evening. Does any member of the board wish to speak to this first? Another week in the past, when we were at the second night of town meeting in particular, our board, which was meeting at the council and age, you did have some concerns with some things that were happening and wanted to put this on an agenda for a discussion. So open it up to the floor and into the moderator, if anyone would like to start.
Well, I think when I was at the meeting, what, one or two weeks ago, you said you'd heard feedback from either citizens or members. So so many have contacted me directly, so I'm interested in what you heard.
All right, I see Mr. Zulus' hand raised. Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Bob. Yeah, I mean, I think, Bob, you're aware, we've seen some email traffic go back and forth about the discussion. And I believe it was Article 3 now. I don't, I don't remember the four articles. It was the article having to do with the accessory dwelling unit. And I thought the intention there was good, which was to confine the discussion to initially the remand, and whether it should be remanded, or whether it should be referred back for further study. But I think in practice, what happened was, at least in some respects, we may have ended up with a skewed debate because it seemed like some of the speakers, and I recognize that you were being very courteous in allowing speakers to speak. Some of the speakers went a little further, and and some thought spoke about the substance, while others were strictly following your rule. And I can say that I tried to strictly follow your rule and not talk about the substance. I, I think the Chair of our board did the same thing. I think, I think, I think the, perhaps the Planning Board may have done the same thing. So I think there was, there were some speakers, and I was one of them, who tried to strictly follow your rule and did not speak to any of the substance, whereas it appeared there were others who spoke, who may not have been as strict in their interpretation of your rule and spoke more of the substance. And so I think there was a concern expressed by by several of the town meeting members that the debate may have been a little skewed as a result. And so without, without focusing too much on the past and focusing more on the future, I think we just want to do our best, if that was an issue, and I, I think it was, do our best to make sure that doesn't happen again, that, you know, certain people who try to try to follow the rules don't feel like they didn't get a chance to really speak to it, and and try to make sure there's those who may have, may have strayed a little bit, may be kept in. So that, that's, I don't know if that's a little bit more than you needed, but that's, that's the essence of of what I've heard and what I, what I experienced myself.
Okay, no, that's, that's clear.
I saw Ms. Collins' hand as well, so if you wanted to weigh in, Ms. Collins, then maybe we could give Bob an opportunity to speak and respond.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't, I don't think I need to to add anything there. It's probably better if Mr. His just gets to speak to this.
Okay, sure. So as I was listening in real time, I heard three arguments that members were making. And I'm going to look at my watch here, and I'm going to make the three arguments without any evidence. So I'll say, go. So the first is, there were problems with the language. We should send it back and fix it. That was one debate line. The second was, there were problems with the process. We should not send it back. We should vote on it. And the third was, there were no problems with the language or the process. It's time to vote. So I just looked at that, and that took me about 20 seconds. But I didn't, I don't think I convinced anybody, because I didn't offer any evidence. So if your point is, and there were some members, I think you heard this, would say, I have problems with the language, and here are my problems with the language. For example, I remember one member said, I got an issue with parking. If you allow this to happen in a certain zone, we've got a conflict between the language of the article and the conflict with current zoning article. So my evidence to my argument is, send it back and go remove the conflicts. So that was, that was their point. So the evidence had to be the article. Now, I've got, by the way, a comment that didn't come up tonight that I've heard from other members is, Bob, you let them criticize the Planning Board and the Warrant Committee. And so the second point is, if you've got a problem with the process, the process is executed by people. In this case, it was the Planning Board and the Warrant Committee. So they start saying, the Planning Board did this wrong, the Warrant Committee did that wrong. And now I've got members of the town saying, you shouldn't have let them criticize the process and the people on it, but they were offering evidence of their argument. And then the third argument was, well, there's no problem with either. The language is fine, and the voting is fine, or rather, the process is fine. It's time to vote. Their evidence is, we've done this four different times. The town really needs this. It's a good thing. We should just vote on it. But they're starting off for evidence of what happened in the past, which has nothing to do with referring it back. And they're offering evidence of whether it's, it's, we need this now, we should do it and just vote on it. So everybody's offering evidence in their argument to try to persuade people. Now, I think our challenge is, we don't have any Daniel Webster's on the floor of town meeting, and people kind of meander their way to their point. And some get there quickly, and you know, we've got some very long-winded speakers who take a while to get there. And so I'm, I'm left, as I'm listening in real time, do I let them wander a while as they're offering their evidence? Or do I try to cut off the evidence and weaken their argument? And so my philosophy has been, well, they've been elected by the members. They're trying to make a point as best they can and offer their evidence, but I got part of the town saying, well, they shouldn't have been allowed to speak on the content, and others saying, you shouldn't have aligned the Warrant Committee, and but everybody's doing their best to try to make an argument. So that's how I was thinking through it in real time.
Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I appreciate that, Bob. So I guess the question is going forward. And I'll use myself as an example, someone who was trying to follow your rule, right, and didn't address the substance at all, but feels like, you know, at the end of the day, because, perhaps because I didn't, you know, meander or try to, try to, try to make too much of it, didn't really get to speak to it as, as much as others. So I mean, if, if, if the, if the answer is, well, you should just speak to it next time and don't try to follow the rule, or or maybe the answer could be, hey, look, if, if, if we're trying to be courteous and and let people speak, maybe we just open it up next time and not try to cut that fine line between the substance of the article and the, the substance of whether you return it for further study. Because, because maybe that, maybe trying to cut it that way created the issue for people who are trying to follow the rules, like, you know, like myself, and perhaps the Chair of this committee, and and others. So so maybe that's the answer, maybe trying to cut it, cut it too close. I'm trying to, you know, I'm just, just trying to make it, trying to make some suggestions so that next time, you know, people feel like they, they had a chance to speak.
Well, let me give you an example of evidence that I might have said, wait a minute, that's out of line. If someone says, well, the reason I don't want this is because I hate ADUs, and there's too many people in this town already, and we should just cut the whole, excuse me, ma'am, sir. That's not a rational argument about why we should send it back or not. You're now getting into a general problem you have with the town. So if we could talk about problem you have with the language or the process, or it's time to vote, that would be where I'd try to steer the members toward something that says, why send it back or not, versus why vote it up or down or not? If that's helping.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't help me in terms of what I do next time. I mean, other than just not to follow your rule, and I don't want to do that, Bob. You know, I want to follow your rule. But if, if the people who aren't interested in following the rule are just going to talk at length, I mean, that's, that's the issue I have. That's, I just don't know what to do next time.
Well, I guess I'd say, what I was trying to describe is, if, if you remember that says, I've got problems with the language. We should send it back. How do I cut them off from giving evidence of their argument? The problem is the language. Here's the paragraphs that I got problems with. That's, now they're in the content, per your definition, I think.
Absolutely. And I think, Bob, if I could suggest, you don't cut them off, but then you open it up for everyone. You just say, you know what, this, trying to cut this, this, cut it this way is not working, right, because people are offering evidence that is getting into the substance. So you that are trying to follow my rules, you should speak to the substance, too.
Yep. Well, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bob. I was just, we'd go to Ms. Collins, but let's let you speak first.
Yeah. I think as a general rule, it's a good practice to ask the members to listen to the motion that's on the floor. Otherwise, we could get real chaos. And in some of the motions, there are motion to, you know, limit debate, or motions to, you know, advance an article, whatever it happens to be. And so if, if there's no control over the content, then I think we do have a much more chaotic meeting. So I think what we're just left with is the judgment of the members and the judgment of the moderator to the members to do their best to try to follow what the, the motion on the floor is, and the moderator to do their best is to interpret what's being heard and see if it's in the spirit of the motion. That's the, I think, the, the live, real-time dynamic that's going on.
Lynda Collins. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think my, one of my concerns really is a concern for all of us. It's not, I think, just about the moderator's job, but I was really disturbed by someone asking to hear the minority point of view, and then that was then, you know, talked about. And we hadn't really even, we hadn't seen the, the Planning Board's presentation. And I understand the Planning Board elected not to actually share that upfront, even though they were given the chance. So I, I understand that. My real concern is is that once a board makes a decision, everyone is supposed to speak with one voice, and it's that, the, the majority decision. And actually, we are looking at policies later this evening, and that's, you know, enshrined in one of our policies. And while this maybe isn't necessarily something that we can solve here, I am very concerned about that. It's partisan politics, and I would like to see a way for us to create some policies around that, and that's not necessarily your job, Mr. His. But I, I just wanted to mention that at this point, so that boards and committees have some training around making sure that the decisions that are made by boards and committees are faithfully represented. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of things. Maybe on your first point, I, we have, you know, we have a planning meeting on the Thursday or so before town meeting. So I asked the, the Chair of the Planning Board that night if the Planning Board wanted to speak on the motion to refer, and they said, no, we don't. We'll wait. I went on Monday night. I asked him again, if we get to Article 2 on Monday. They said, no, we do not want to speak on the motion to refer. I asked him again on Wednesday night, but we knew it was going to be then. Third time, they said, no, we don't want to speak on the motion to refer. We have no plans for it. I said, okay, then, what we'd agreed on, we'd go to the Warrant Committee Chair, because it was their motion, and open it up to the floor. So I, whether that was the right tactic or not, I'll leave that up for the Planning Board and town meeting to decide. On your point, yeah, philosophically, I agree with you that I don't think boards should be publicly split like that. I think policies or not, I don't know, but I think the voters can decide whether they liked the behavior of the members that were the minority speaking out, and they can reward or punish them at the ballot box. Whether you want to do a policy or not, that's not my remit and domain, but I agree with you. I think as a board, you make your argument, you know, make a decision, and you go out and face the public as a board. I agree with that principle.
London. Thank you, Mr. His. Yes, I, you, you, you supplied ample opportunities, as I would always expect you to, because I've been involved in some of those meetings with you when I was Chair. So I, I, I know how you usually plan out a town meeting. But, but it's not just elected boards and committees that present their split votes. You know, it's also appointed, and I think that that's where I think a policy could really be helpful. Obviously, we're not going to make a policy for the Planning Board, but but I think that, I think that's something that we might be able to work on, since we're both appointing authorities. Thank you.
For example, even on the Warrant Committee, which I appoint, I ask them, even if you're elected town meeting members, please don't speak at town meeting. As a Warrant Committee member, even if you are elected, you're going to, that's something, I'm asking you to give up while you're doing it. Now, I've talked to some members over the years, and most abided. I had one that spoke up this last one. So we're going to have a conversation before the next town meeting. I'm going to say, I'm asking, ask again, please don't break ranks, so to speak, with the Warrant Committee. It's, you're agreeing to give up your town meeting speaking rights, not your voting rights, but your speaking rights. Once you agree to, Warrant Committee, that's your influence on the process, so please abide by that. So I'm fully supportive of that unanimity principle, let's say, in public.
And before we go to Mr. Doyle, I want to agree with Ms. Collins on that point. You know, that was always the tradition of the Warrant Committee, that the Chair spoke for the committee, and the other members did not go outside and speak as a town meeting member. So I think it's important that we get back to that and eliminate this idea of minority report and majority report that has crept into both the Planning Board and the Warrant Committee meetings recently. And it really has not been the town of Milton's practice to do that. I know, you know, appellate courts issue dissenting opinions. Federal government sometimes issue minority reports, but that's, you know, the local level, that's not something that, that we've done. When it has come up, rarely, I've, I've talked with some former town government officials about this. It's been pretty rare when it's come up, and it's usually been pretty frowned upon. So I hope we can get back to our tradition of, we, we take the vote, and then that's the vote of the board, and we don't have majority and minority reports. Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Moderator, for being with us this evening. This is a little bit of a shift. Comments from several citizens, about four of them, if I remember correctly, relative to the fact that they are newcomers to the town of Milton, let's say, within the past five years. And those that come from cities don't understand the functionality of the town government. As one person said, I've been here for several years. It's, it's on me. But let me ask you several questions. And they wanted to know what a Warrant Committee is. A couple of others had come to town from other towns where they have finance committees, but not warrant committees. Right. So is there a way in which we can somehow preamble at the front end, a quick review so that people observing, and hopefully later on, maybe even running for office for the town meeting and participating, can get a clear distinction up front about what the roles of the different participants are? We know, for example, some towns like ours have a warrant committee, others have only finance committees. There are some that have finance or warrant committees combined. So any clarification on that for our citizenry that can be entertained would be very, very helpful.
You mean, Mr. Doyle, at the beginning of town meeting, a refresher of the players in the, in the play, so to speak?
I, I think that's what's being asked for.
Okay. All right. I'm all for educating the citizens. That's a good idea.
And that's not to make the town meeting longer, or to put an honest on you, but I think it would be very, very constructive.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I think it'd be an additive to, we're gonna have a big election, and we could have a lot of new members. On the Sunday night before, by long tradition, we hold a new member orientation meeting. We did it on Zoom before and then in the high school. And so we invite them all in, and Ms. Galvin is there, and I'm there, and we describe what happens in the whole process, so that at least the new town meeting members are oriented, but the citizen point's a good one.
And and that, right, then that's the distinction, and there are more of them than there are the town meeting members, of course.
We are.
Thank you.
Just one last point, if I may. Something I've I've talked to a lot of the other moderators of representative town meetings, many of whom have had multiple Zoom sessions like we have. And they have noticed a decline in kind of decorum. It starts to take on some of the social media behavior. People get a little more strident. I don't know if you were watching the comment bars, but they were getting a little more angry. You heard some members really get wound up on on Wednesday night. And I am, one of the reasons I'm looking for it, I know I'll jump on the topic of the next one, but getting in person, it's a little different to be strident when the person you're speaking with is sitting next to you versus the protection of a glass screen between you and your other fellow town meeting member. So it's not just Milton, it's it's happening all over the Commonwealth as everybody's cooped up on Zoom meetings, including our town meeting.
Yeah, and I think it's also just part of the, unfortunately, the dysfunction and the divisiveness at the national level seeping down into all levels of government and reaching the local government, unfortunately. And this is a complaint we've heard from a lot of elected officials in other communities as well. Before we go on to the next item, I I just wanted to add my thoughts, and and I mentioned a couple people that I think that, and that Bob and I met recently, I wanted to talk with Bob about some other issues, and I brought up some of these concerns on my own, my own thoughts on them. But I I agree with what Mr. Zulus and Ms. Collins said regarding the town meeting. But I I think one of the key issues here that was probably set the boil in motion was if the warrant committee voted to recommend that the accessory dwelling unit article go back for further study before the planning board had had their second public hearing, and that is really highly unusual. The warrant committee has traditionally always waited for the planning board to conclude the public hearing process, and then sit down again with the planning board and come up with a recommendation. So I I think that was part of the problem, and I also think that we, although the planning board probably should have taken you up, Bob, on your offer to let them speak first. If in a situation where we're looking at a complicated zoning article that the planning board has spent months on, the warrant committee has not, I I think we probably, whether the planning board wants, you know, takes you up on it, and I think probably that should be the process, that the board that submitted the article should at least get a chance to present to the 279 or so town meeting members what they're trying to accomplish. Before we get to the warrant committee recommendation, I don't know whether that's something that maybe you can just require as the moderator going forward, or whether we have to come up with some more formal way to to handle that, maybe not through bylaws, but it it seemed that that probably should have been the course, so that at least the message and what the 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 board's objective and what they were trying to accomplish would have been heard by the town meeting members before, was consideration of whether this went back for further study. Because it is, you know, it's important to acknowledge, it's something that an elected board spent months working on, and having watched the warrant committee meetings and the planning board meetings on this, there was a lot of public debate and member debate at the planning board meetings, there was not at the warrant committee. It was, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that there were changes being made to the article, and there were revised drafts floating around. But it seemed to me that was premature for the warrant committee to have voted the way they did. But that's that's in the past, I think we just need to proactively try to make sure collectively that that doesn't happen again. So that's that that was my sense, in addition to what was said earlier. Does anyone else have any comments on the ways that we can try to address this proactively? Mr. Doyle. I'm sorry, Mr. Doyle, I can't hear you, you're muted.
Apologize, Bob. At the outset, you had mentioned having heard from people. Is there anything that we didn't touch bases on that you heard? Is there anything that you have in mind whereby we might be able to be helpful?
I did hear a couple ideas on this. There were there's always been a question on the complexity and degree of questions that are asked at town meeting. And in some cases, for example, I had a long chat with a a member last night, and you remember when we got to the health unit article? I think there was a a member submitted 10 different points upfront, and they wanted to strike it as a friendly amendment. So they submitted all their points, we routed it off to the planning board. I think they accepted eight points, the member withdrew two. So this member had done all their homework in advance, so that we didn't spend a lot of time on town meeting floor. There wasn't a lot of live debate while we're, you know, we go on mute. And the meeting was much more efficient, and the members' points got addressed, and and the planning board got to think about it and answer it. And so the idea that this member had is an information session on the articles, which is not debate, but just Q and A. So some other towns have have started doing this, and I've tried to do it with the the interview on Milton Cable Access with the the warrant committee chair. But for example, to have a meeting with the 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 chair of the boards who are submitting articles on the week before. He said, if you want to come, we're gonna be there for two hours, and you can ask all the questions you want of schools and DPW and planning and whatever it is, the warrant committee chair, explain to me what's going on, not get into the debate, but just Q and A, and maybe move some of that stuff off of town meeting. Or at least if they're complex ones, give the sponsors a couple of days to answer the complex ones and come back, so we're not stuck with a very difficult one on the night of town. You know, it would be another meeting for all of you, or at least some of you and and other members, but other towns are starting to do it in order to make the town meeting process a little more efficient.
More education upfront, the better. I mean, for the Milton Village zoning, there was a a video presentation, and maybe something like this would have helped on both the memory care and the accessory dwelling unit articles, especially when there was a letter campaign that had a lot of information that was inaccurate in it and created confusion. They had people calling us and emailing us, asking questions and just wrong information. So unfortunately, that happened this time, but an educational effort is always a good thing. All right, if there's nothing else on item five, why don't we move on to item six and talk about what the plans are and what the issues may be for the in-person May town meeting. And the the new date for all the viewers is May 16th, Monday night is the first night. So Bob, do you want to give us any kind of an update on what your thoughts are and what? You know, I I know you told us that you were consulting with various moderators in other communities and seeing what how this is being handled, what your current thoughts, maybe we talked about the high school auditorium, it was close to the Pierce Auditorium at the last meeting.
Yes, so across the Commonwealth, almost all the towns are going back to, including the representative town meetings, back to in-person meetings now. Most of them have members same size as ours, over 200, there's a few smaller ones. And I think it's because everyone is realizing they're seeing that decorum kind of decline, there's an urge to get back in person, a back to normal urge. So I've been, I've just been chatting with the the Board of Health, and they're saying, yeah, numbers are ticking up slightly on cases, less so on hospital, serious hospitalization illness and death. So they're seeing that BA dot two is probably, you know, creeping in now. So their board is kind of split, whether it's a problem or not, but they're not saying stop. They're not saying it's dangerous right now. So given that the restrictions have largely been lifted, you know, in the Commonwealth and everywhere, and as I've talked to members, I've only had one person that said they've got a concern about going back. The vast majority have said, yes, we're anxious to get back in person. I'd like to see us do that.
Does anyone have any suggestions or thoughts they want to share with the moderator? Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Moderator, for coming in tonight. I too have been following the numbers a little bit. The COVID numbers are increasing. They're not increasing, you know, at 100 degree angle going up, but if you follow the numbers, and it's particularly like the wastewater, things like that. As Representative Driscoll, I talked to him earlier today about this. It's like a 45% increase, and it's going up, it's not leveling off, it continues to rise. So where does, how high does it go, and how fat, where is it in May? So I just think it probably proved for us, maybe we won't have to go back to Zoom. But I think as we had thought of, I think it was this time last year, maybe we may want to look at having a contingency for having this outside. And especially if we get to, so what are we, eight weeks away or seven weeks? How many weeks away? Seven weeks away?
No. Or then May 16th, just a little more.
Six, so, all right, so five and a five weeks. So let's say it continues at that rate, if it continues to accelerate, and all of a sudden it becomes a news story, and then the public health will take action again. Just think that we should have some kind of, the one good thing for all of us is we're heading into the warm weather. As we know, from the past two summers, the spring summer was where we got the magic of the outside air, and I think if we have some type of contingency, then maybe I would, I think one of the things you had talked about, please, while the meeting, just think we need to have a contingency between being in public, in the auditorium, and in public, perhaps outside. Because those numbers have been steadily rising now for a couple of weeks.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just a thought.
You know, it's
Safety background, I can't help it.
Yeah, it's the, it's the planning effort of the contingency, because it, as I've talked to other towns, you really got to start organizing well in advance, unless you do some, there's a simple model. Some towns went to the high school auditorium, and they kept all the doors open. And people that were concerned or nervous sat outside. And if they wanted to speak, they would microphone to the door, they'd walk up to the door, and they'd speak, and then they'd go back outside. And if you were comfortable, you sat inside. So there's something simple like that. There's another
Work, I'm I'm fine with that. I like what is, I just think you have to have some, and we've just spent 30 minutes talking about, you know, this is almost like an after action report on the town meeting two weeks ago, the issues. Think that we have to have some type of flexibility here, given what's happening, so that I don't think we want to schedule in person and then find out that a lot of people won't come, because they want to have some type of contingency. So that's all, that's my only, only thought.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes they're doing full outdoors, they go to their high school auditorium, set up chairs out in the field.
That's what I said, that's why I suggested like having a
Now, that's got microphones and and speakers, and there's a lot of logistics in that versus, you know, go to the auditorium and just put some chairs outside. And of course, we got the weather contingency we'll deal with.
So I'll give you a little hint before you leave. Reach out to the principal of the high school and ask them for their operations plan for graduation, because that's basically what you want to do.
Right.
Same layout, the same chair design, stage, public address system is already there. All of that, and that would work for you. That 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 logistics and the operations that they use for for graduation would work for us, maybe with a couple of weeks.
There's, there's a third model, a lot of towns use is when they have overflow, they have a central room, and they have satellites. So for example, we could have satellite rooms in the high school if people are want to spread out. The issue is you have to kind of appoint like an associate moderator in the room. And so they are recognizing people want to speak, and they would, they walk up and they get trained on the camera, then the cameras and the screen, you know. So there's logistics to all these alternates that we got to plan now is, I think, the issue. And we're back where we were before, we just don't know what the data, the data is trending up, right? But we don't know if it's dangerous or just.
Well, the good thing is the hospitalizations ever still remains part one. They, you know, as we've learned in this board here, when people have a fear of COVID, many of them will articulate it very loudly, and I wouldn't want to see it to get to someone who particularly in an elected town meeting, an elected official, is afraid to come because they're concerned about the safety from COVID. So, I mean, we've got, even if it's four weeks, I think we need to keep it on our radar. There's, that's it, I don't want to take any more time, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I think the challenge for, you know, the state, the field, is that this is evening, so we'd have to pick up lights and some other additional precautions that they don't have during the high school graduation. I mean, you're, it's a good point, Richard, that this, a lot of the setup of the chairs and the podium would be the same, but maybe some other weather related or evening related challenges.
The reason I suggested Brooks is because of the fact that the lights there, as as anyone's ever been to the night games, makes it like daytime out there. It's it's, it's, it's very similar to daytime.
Okay, all right, well, something for Bob to think about. Bob, do you want to maybe, you know, back to a future meeting if you think there's any updates? That the challenge would be that the warrant will be going to print fairly soon, so.
Right.
Mr. Zulus, I see your hand is raised.
I I was just gonna say, just along the lines of what's been said, regardless of whether we see the need to change because of a sudden change in the numbers, I think we should look into now accommodations for those who may not be comfortable, whether it be sitting in the back of the auditorium, whether it be satellite rooms. I think we should have some accommodation, because, you know, we, I've heard from a couple of people, Bob, you may, you've heard from one person. We we may not have heard, we may have only heard from, we may not have heard from tho- those who may well be uncomfortable at the time. So I think we should really look into accommodations, accommodations for the meeting.
Just a question, do you think a daytime meeting? A lot of towns have gone to that instead of evening meetings, would, like a Saturday? Would that, at least you'd eliminate the cold, May can be cold when you walk out at the end of those meetings, right?
Yeah, but the issue is we moved the town meeting from Saturday to a weeknight back in the early 90s, late 80s, for religious observance reasons, it's Sabbath, so. So I'm not sure that would be an option. But Ms. Ms. Collins, sorry.
Oh, Madam Chair, I was just going to mention that thing.
Well.
Well, I got religious objections, health objections, Zoom objections. Like Lincoln said, I'm not sure we can please all the people all the time here. Why don't I convene my committee, and we run through some scenarios of what we could pull off in the next six weeks and see if we can, we probably got to get the work goes out in what, two?
Yeah, approximately, that, maybe there's a way we listed default location, but the the weather would seem to be a challenge for outdoors. But, you know, there are all good ideas on the table. All right, then, we meet again on Wednesday, the 13th, Bob. If there's any reason you want to join us for that, if there's any more updates on the town meeting, feel free to join us.
Why don't I come back?
Okay. All right, well, thanks for your time this evening.
All right, thanks all.
All right.
Okay, bye.
Lynn, if we could move Kevin Freitag in as a panelist, he's going to be joining us for certain items during the evening, so I just want to be sure we have him available if he needs to jump in. I I think Karen Pavel is probably at the warrant committee meeting, so we do have Sean O'Rourke in the attendee group. We could move on to the next item, which is the discussion, the school building committee, Land Swab article. I am going to recuse myself on that, I've been recused on this item because it relates to a potential building project that would be bonded, and I work with bond counsel. So I'm going to ask Mr. Doyle to cheer this portion of the meeting, and Lynn, if you could move Sean O'Rourke over from the attendee group. I'm going to turn off my camera and video, and then I'll come back when you're finished. We have this on our agenda as item 6B, as well as item 6C, one and two. It just is some duplication by error, so it's really, those can all be combined. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see if Sean is with us, Mr. O'Rourke.
Not yet, I'm trying to get him moved over.
Okay.
Hey, Mike here. Who, um, do you want me to change to a panelist?
We're all set.
Thank you for being with us, Sean. Mrs. Zulus, did you want to make any introductory comments and introduce Sean?
Yeah, well, thank you.
But I want to
Yeah, no, no, thank you.
From this board to the school building committee.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and and this is an article that the, this board has voted to put on the warrant. We haven't voted a position yet on this, but but Sean is the chair of the school building committee, and he has a presentation about this article, and so we, this is an opportunity for Sean to make the presentation, any of the members to ask questions, and to see whether we want to take action tonight on this or sometime in the future, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus, and Sean, the floor is yours, sir. Welcome, and you are on mute.
Yeah, sorry about that, Mr. Vice Chair. Yeah, sorry about that. Mr. Vice Chair is just looking for the unmute button. So cut that. Uh, thank you again for an audience tonight. Uh, we like to just give you a kind of update in a presentation. Uh, for the school building committee. Uh, as you may be aware, we've been running feverishly over the past couple of months, doing a number of community work, uh, educating, education forums. Uh, and stuff like that. So if I may, I'll share my screen. There we go. And just let me know when it came through. Perfect. Um, so as many of you were on on this board, our our committee is made up of nine members. Uh, the five of us at the top are mixture mixture of design and construction professionals. Uh, on the bottom left, Ada and Betty are members of the school committee that were appointed by the school committee. Uh, on the bottom right is members Zulus and Glenn Hoffman that was appointed by your board. Um, you know, we've been working together now for coming up on three years. Uh, and so tonight, I just wanted to walk you through. Um, some of our progress and kind of where we're at. Um, as as some of you where we had produced an overcrowding video and and this video was. Um, a a big thing for us mainly because it showed behind the walls of the school. Um, the overcrowding is talked about a lot publicly i- in in these forums, but I don't think anyone's ever, ever showed exactly what's going on behind the walls. Uh, if I may, I'd like to present that video tonight, if that's okay. Circle band and just need to share with.
Well, it's interesting because, you know, you guys are here to film the pinch.
One of the biggest challenges I see is the over, the overcrowding. In an ideal situation, particularly at your elementary levels, you would like to keep class sizes no more than eighteen. To allow for our teachers to give individualized attention.
You can definitely see that there are spaces that are smaller. There are spaces that are gone. So if you want examples, if you think of the library, we have um, a classroom of second graders, which also happens to our biggest second grade classroom. In a um, space in the corner of the library where there used to be extra um, shelving for books.
Art room, but the music room allowing for some space to sing really was just too small. So as you'll see, we've actually now converted our gym. We've split it down the middle with the curtain. And half of the gym is being used for music three days a week and the other uh, three days a week is being used for PE.
Up in our library, what had been our maker space, which is the biggest place of our library. Um, it's now being used as uh, as a digital classroom for for our fuse and technology classes, which. Um, you know, we, on one hand, we've been fortunate to have a little bit of space to create another classroom, but. Um, you know, that that kind of came with the loss of of the maker space too.
So our music room uh, was, we we were able to preserve it up until this year. But this year we had to uh, transform our stage in the cafeteria into a music room. Um, we had to take all of the instruments that are usually um, stored and on display for children to access and we had to put them in a closet.
And that does create a bottleneck that does take up time, which means the teachers leave earlier to make sure that they have enough time to eat, which cuts away from, you know. Core academic time and there's sort of um, no way around it because you're cutting something and you want to make sure. Once they get in the cafeteria, those lines, you know, they have enough time to actually eat before they go to recess. So you can't um, fault the teacher for leaving earlier to get them in there because all of that takes more time because more classrooms and more students are going into those spaces.
We we often hear from students and families that some of the most stressful times of the day was lunchtime. You know, the students have about twenty minutes to find their way, find a seat, get their lunch, eat it. Um, in in a, in what was a borderline sort of hysterical uh, environment where.
Choreographed their day in such a way that um, we are sort of smoothly moving a lot of children through very cramped and tight spaces.
And as far as our teachers, it's cramping their space. It's very difficult to break up into small groups when you have twenty eight, twenty nine students in the class.
We've given up a lot to provide great services for our children. So it feels great to be able to do that. Um, what we sacrifice is uh, quality of planning time and locations for our staff. The opportunity to find a quiet place for planning, uh, planning with colleagues is is sometimes. Not so easy. It's not easy to find that space, but. We're working together. We're figuring it out. We're very grateful to be in beautiful buildings. Um, but I'll, if I'm being honest, I have teachers sometimes taking meetings from their car.
And when you look at the current um, enrollments in the fourth and fifth grade now that are nearing four hundred. Um, you know, ballooning the size of teams to a hundred and twenty five, a hundred thirty, a hundred forty. Uh, what your your class sizes are going to be uh, enormous. You're going to be talking about. Twenty eight to thirty students in most on team classes. So math, imagine classrooms of math. And English and science and social studies with pushing thirty students in there.
We are continuing to grow, like just as a, as a, a point of of note, when I started at Tucker, I believe we were at three hundred and fifty students. And we're about four seventy. Uh, I mean, and that's just within, you know, our eight and nine year time span. So. It it's, it's, we've grown, you know, pretty dramatically and I don't think people realize that.
Have an issue that we have to confront in terms of our enrollment and um. The status quo of of, you know, both from uh, school building, physical plant, as well as personnel and programming. Are going to have to evolve with um, with the, with our enrollments and with the complex, the complexities that come with that. If we're going to be able to continue to offer our kids and families the same high quality education that um, the students have have enjoyed.
So. With with this overcrowding video, you know, what what we're trying to do, as I mentioned, is is, you know, show what's going on behind the walls. Um, yeah. A lot of people have chimed in recently regarding like alternatives. Why don't we build on the existing schools? Why don't we do this? Why don't we do that? We have, as a committee, have exhausted all those options and a few of them I'll touch on right now. Um, building onto the existing schools will not give you the capacity numbers that you need. Um, for what we're experiencing. It would only address the elementary level. Part of the reason that wouldn't work is building onto an existing building. You you then trigger additional things that probably aren't thought of, additional bathrooms. Revised HVAC calculations to make the HVAC systems accommodate more people in there. The other one that comes in and the reason I put the um, the cafeterias in here, the cafeterias are essentially the pinch points. Of a lot of these facilities, the students have to go in and out. Currently, as you can see, they're pretty full and they don't have a lot of time and the windows that run those uh, the lunchtime programs would have to expand. So you'd have children eating lunch at roughly ten AM and then not eating for the rest of the day. So those type of things that people throw at their. Um, we addressed those early on and, you know, as we studied this. You know, the reason this is all happening is, you know, enrollment data in the grade configuration is kind of what I want to touch on a little bit. Right now, um, since the schools were opened in two thousand and eight, you can see a dramatic increase in enrollment. And what you're seeing here is the total enrollment of the district from pre K to twelve. This is mainly spurred by real estate transactions and we can get into detailed graphs and overlay them. Um, our committee studied all that. Uh, the projections going out are fairly flat and and what what comes representative of this and why we're confident in saying this is. It, we look at the kindergarten numbers, kindergartens at at that first level that we can't turn kids away, preschool or the pre K program. You can limit the numbers. Um, but once these kids, once we see these large bumps occurring in the kindergarten age. They progress through all the way to fifth grades. Our numbers in kindergarten have not been going down. So this. This trend of over enrollment or or capacity issues is going to go on for the next five to six years. Easy. With the amount of um, changes that are occurring in the town, I I just see it's going to go even further worse. So, you know, it, this, this graph for me, as I talk about, when I, when we talk about enrollment. Uh, uh, engineering is my background and I had, I I look at, I try to look at things differently at different times. So what I did on this is. I flipped the axis these. So on the vertical axis here, you have the years uh, for enrollment and across the horizontal is the breakdown of those grades. Some of the key things you can look at at this, this graph of the kindergarten, which is the red on the left hand side. In two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, it was two hundred and forty nine. Pre pandemic, if you go up to twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, it's three seventy two. So now, the simple math that people have to keep in mind is a kindergarten classroom is roughly twelve hundred square feet. And houses ideally because of the age group of about eighteen to twenty students. Right there, we're looking at roughly an extra hundred and twenty students, a little more than that. That's six extra kindergartens that were not planned for. And those students are now going to progress to first grade, to second grade, to third grade and so on. So as people talk about this enrollment, you know, thing, is it going to go down? Is it not? This is kind of the data that we point to. So the district architecture that we have right now, uh, we have four elementary schools that feed up to a single middle school that houses sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And then they feed up to a single uh, high school. Previously, what I presented to this board, we have, we presented two different options. I'm happy to announce. The school committee has unanimously voted for our our middle school with pre K. And what what this does is reconfigure the grades. So right now, the proposal is. Is the existing elementary schools will only house kindergarten to fourth grade. The fifth grade would move up to the peers along with the sixth grade that's there. So at the peers that currently houses the regrade levels will now only house two. Essentially freeing up space at the existing peers. The new middle school that we're proposing, and we'll talk about that later in the, in the article. Would house the seventh and eighth grade and also a pre K wing. So again, alleviating space at the elementary school level. And then this would feed on to the high school. Part of the reason the school committee was looking at this, it it became, you know, the 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 talk of transitions came into effect. And one of the things of having the middle school at the high school location of what I've called essentially an educational campus. Um, would would lessen those transitions a little bit. So one of the other ones that we've been working on recently uh, for our committee is the, the first thing I I brought to everyone's attention when I got on to this committee was, you know, what's our timeline? We're not going to build the school tomorrow. So, you know, I I tried to lay it out here for everybody to understand. The critical, criticality of why we're pushing so hard for this. So our anticipation is that town meeting, there would be a vote on the omnibus uh, land swap that we have. Um, knowing that that is the first step of this overall process, it would then need to go to the state legislature. Uh, the assumption is it would take about a year. In that same time. We're hoping to resubmit to MSBA and get selected and have our SOI selected next year. And essentially start a partnership with them in twenty twenty three. MSBA publishes all their timelines. We've seen them from uh, past projects that go on. The timeline associated with that is about seven years. So by pushing, by pushing these votes further out, we're pushing more into twenty thirty, twenty thirty one. And so this is essentially a domino effect that occurs and that's, that's our kind of push as a committee right now. The other one that goes into this is, you know, the main questions that always have come up is where will it go and how much will it cost? Internally, within our committee, we've also looked at, you know, what do, what exactly are we building? Would it be an elementary school? And if it was, would it be pre K to fit? Would it be K to fit? Uh, the other options were an early childhood education center, a middle school, and a middle school pre K. Where will it go was also a parallel path that our our committee was studying and working towards. We looked at purchasing private uh, land from private entities. We issued an RFP and had zero responses. Um, we we entertained a ground lease and reached out to the archdiocese, Milton Hospital and the academy. And then finally, we were looking at town owned land. So we had like three paths that we were running through. When I put it all on paper, this is what it looks like to me. It is confusing. There are tons of different things in um. Um, variables going on and and this is a joke slide, you know, that this to me. This type of math is easier than what we're dealing with with the school equation. So what I've tried to do is, and what I've charged with my committee to do is let's take the variables out that go into the cost equation. Because I think that's going to be the biggest one for us going forward. Um, and and try to get those variables into constants. So with the school committee voting, that helps. That sets, you know, what are we building? We know what we're building right now. The other one that we've done is we've kind of eliminated, we we've gone through trying to get private land. We've tried to do a ground lease. It didn't happen. So we focused in on town land. So on the land timeline, if I can kind of use this, you know, similar timeline graphic. You know, on the left, our our school building committee was formed in twenty nineteen. We use kind of the remainder of that year to get familiar with each other and. You know, figure out exactly what we're doing. There wasn't really a handbook that we could follow. You know, at the end of that year, we started realizing we have to start studying for land and that that study that I was talking about, those three. Things that we looked at for private land, ground leases and town owned land, we worked, we pulled in. Uh, the late John Cronin and Bill Clark, the assistant, uh, the previous town planner. To sit down and go through what was available in the town, everything, basically tap their knowledge. Um, as we went through in uh, in August, we issued uh, an RFP. And basically asking to buy land. We didn't have money, but we figured, you know, we'll figure that out next if somebody offers. In twenty twenty, I took control, I I took over as chair of this committee and one of my goals and I stated at that town meeting was. We were going to find land and that was kind of my goal for twenty twenty one coming up. In August of that summer, we announced Gile Road was the property we wanted to go after. And since then. Uh, we've been working on public engagement. I kind of want to walk through different pieces of this. So the land study, as I talked about. We looked at multiple sites. So as I mentioned, we issued an RFP, we had zero responses. Obviously, nobody wanted to sell land, which was fine. We worked with the town planner, Tim Zawinski, who provided a number of parcels, a hundred and seven of them. Seventy seven of which were below four acres, which at our time, we thought was our plan or our plan program or minimum threshold. As you will see, four acres was not enough. That was a theoretical thing that we were talking about as a committee. Once we engaged architects, we realized we needed more like six to eight acres. So out of the remaining thirty parcels that were on that list, five were the schools, four were active parks. Eleven is constant, eleven of them were conservation land, including Pope's Pond, Turner's Pond, Town Forest. And then ten, the remaining ten were town owned parcels that already had, you know, buildings on them. So as I mentioned, this is the RFP. It was publicly out there. We put it out. We, you know, we 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 chased that avenue as best we could. We approached St. Mary's of the Hills. There was no interest. We reached out personally through contacts to the hospital that might be there, but that, that, that land is currently slated for the memory care center. We looked at St. Pius. It was too small. And then we looked, we also thought about the access road. Uh, there's a horse farm over there that we looked at and that's been sold now and it's gone to a developer. So. The private end of it, if we had funding that we could have executed a a private uh, uh, transaction quicker, it might have helped. But we don't have funding for it. So it made it a little harder or along that timeline. This is that list that was provided to us by the town. And what I tried to do here is cut off, you'll see at the top, it's seventy seven. So everything above there was less than four acres. As I mentioned, our program, we think is has to be about six acres. The remaining parcels that implode there, the two that are highlighted in yellow are the ones that we're talking about for our land swap. The remaining ones that are there, as I mentioned, are schools, uh, conservation land for Turner's pond. Um, the golf course, you know, there's a number of things that it's just not available. So as far as town owned parcels, these were the only two that we could look at. In regards to the Gile Road property, you know, some people I I've seen are mentioning that this is all new to them or or news. It was announced in the Milton Times in Au- in August, we've, and since then. It was announced in the Milton Times in Au- in August. We've, and since then. You know, we've been meeting with, you know, neighborhoods, associations and stuff like that. And I'll talk about that now. As far as our public engagement. We have been working as a committee since last August, August, September, October, February. Community forums, neighborhood meetings through Zoom. One on one meetings with, you know, Home Inc., friends of Blue Hill Parkway. I've had coffee with Joe Mendunio twice. And I appreciate their feedback. And Home Inc. has recently sent us a list of concerns. And we appreciate that. And we're going to incorporate that into our design. It's basically like a good neighbor agreement. And they've come out publicly and said they're not opposed to the project and on support of it, which I fully understand and nor would I expect. But they weren't opposed to it and they had concerns. And, you know, us as a committee couldn't ask for better. So on the site, you know, while we started identifying in August, we reached out to DRA, which was the architect that was previously engaged. For the school building committee last time around. They presented what we have as such a concept design that we could put in front of the neighbors and talk to it. You know, rather than just looking at a, a site plan. So what this would, what this would be is on the first floor would be a preschool wing. And it'd be a three story structure. The remaining floors with the first floor and the remainder of the upper floors would house the seventh and eighth grade. So the article that we want, I, I want to talk about tonight. Is, is the basis of this entire, entire project right now. This is kind of our decision point. We've identified the parcel that we just showed where the building is. It's parcel D six five six A. It's currently conservation land and it's made up of, of two parts. The yellow part that you see there, which is the part we like to acquire. And the remaining part, as we call it, the hockey stick, which is about two acres across Gile Road that would remain conservation land. The main thing to note with that area, it, it, it's a bounded site. So you have Gile Road, Blue Hills Parkway on one side, Home Inc. on the other, and Brooksfield on the other. We like the site mainly do the synergy of the high school. As I mentioned, we would be making this into an educational campus. The nice thing with having the preschool at this location too, is students in early childhood education system at the high school. Can walk across and teach preschool students. It's, it, it was, it was a unique thing that came up after we found the site. Some members of the community have, have mentioned, you know, this site, it has old growth trees and forests. And the designation of that, from what I found, is unique. The parcel that's listed here is not an old growth for trees, does not have old growth trees and forests. So the parcels that we want to add or convert now to conservation land are two parcels along Herrick Drive. That were taken by tax, non-payment of taxes. What should be noted is the parcel adjacent to it in green is already conservation land. So essentially we'd be creating a single unified conservation land parcel along the road. The other parcel that's in question, it was highlighted on that list too, is along Randolph Ave. It's about thirty acres, twenty nine point seven. The majority of which is already conservation land. So the upper and lower boundaries of it. The middle portion is, is available municipal owned land. And we would like to convert that and kind of again unify the site to a single piece of conservation land. Some people have, some of the public have mentioned that it's not buildable. And, you know, my understanding is if you could cross the wetland and get to the buildable site, it is buildable. The lines that you see there, the topography map, and you can see it's kind of upland as the, you know, lines get closer and closer. Very similarly, across the street at Randolph Ave on seven eleven Randolph Ave, which I believe is a forty B project. They're doing something very similar. So the opportunity would be there. The other one that comes into a lot of the talk, we've been meeting with Conservation Commission. We appreciate the dialogue back and forth. A lot of the talk comes into the, the, the ecological value of the sites. So originally, when we thought about it, we, we, you know, I'm an engineer. I'm not, I'm not an environmentalist. But I thought it was valuation monetarily. And their take is that it, there's an ecological value. So we acknowledge that. But when we talked that this could be a buildable site, some of the arguments against that is. Well, there's hot, there's natural habitats there and stuff like that, which lends the argument that it is highly ecological value. So they, they're kind of competing factors and they're inversely proportional. So it's, it's one of the things I'd like to, you know, talk a little bit further on with, with the Conservation Commission. But in, in simple math, we're, we're, we're looking to acquire six point eight three acres on Gile Road. And we're looking to swap in approximately nine acres between Randolph Ave and Herrick Drive. That, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Any questions for members of the select board for Mr. O'Rourke, please? Any comments? Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke for the presentation. I, I know several members of your committee, and I know this is taking a lot of work. So. The fact that Article ninety seven comes into this, and, and Mr. Vice Chair, you make, you also send the conservation. The fact that Article ninety seven comes in, this is going to require, am I correct, a two thirds vote of the town meeting and a two thirds vote? For both, both houses of the legislature, correct?
That is my understanding.
And it had been my understanding previously that part of this land is, is not under our jurisdiction or the school's jurisdiction. But it's Article ninety seven land on the jurisdiction of the park commission. Am I correct on that?
The park commission, if I remember correctly, the park department's property is on the other side of. In the Conservation Commission, if you're coming up, Gile Road off the Parkway would be on the left hand side.
So six months ago, wasn't it your intention to swap those two parcels from one side of the street to the other? Then, yeah, that's the first I've heard of the Randolph Ave property.
Yep. So, so six months ago, originally, as we set out, working with the town council. We were looking to swap, you know, opposite sides of Gile Road. The parcel that you're talking about was Parks Land or it was D for Action. So as we worked with town council and then it went up to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. They noted that both parcels are, are covered under Article ninety seven. So you could not essentially swap them between each other. So we needed to find other municipal land that was not covered under Article ninety seven. So working with Tim Zawinski, the town planner, he identified the Herrick Drive parcels and the Randolph Ave parcel.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question.
You're welcome.
Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I, I, I really appreciate, this has been very difficult work. And Milton doesn't have a lot of excess land. You put an RFP out. You know, didn't, didn't get any positive answers back. I guess, I, I think my concern, since this is Article ninety seven, is that, you know, the Conservation Commission hasn't voted yet. Or it's not really concerned. It's just a note because that needs to be. That's one of the conditions under Article ninety seven, as I understand it. And I think too, as a former Conservation Commissioner. I would have hoped, and, and I real, I realize, you know, there's not a lot of land in Milton. But typically, when I think of Article ninety seven, I, I think of land that already isn't kind of protected. Because it has environmental restrictions and limitations. As, you know, sort of new land being brought in and, and conserved. So I'm just, I'm really interested to, to see what unfolds at the next Conservation Commission meeting. But I don't know when it is.
It'll be a week from last night, Madam Collins. Madam former Chair. Any other questions for Mr. O'Rourke, please? Sean, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. The one thing I can tell you from, you know, studying the maps, studying the available land. And I kind of brought this up as a joke at one point when I was making a, a presentation of, you know. The only other option where we're going with this is an air rights development over I ninety three. There, the, the list of land I provided that's over six acres, there is no land. There is a need for a school. We need to do something as a town. And I, I, I said it last night, it's kind of tough that you have children in this town. That are going through a lot of stuff through the school. They don't get it. They don't know they're supposed to be. Music on a stage in a, in a library doing all this. They're just happily going along their day. But all of us as elected and appointed members of the town do know better. And we need to act on it. I mean, this is not going away. There has to be, somebody has to do something. Our committee has essentially exhausted every avenue that we have. Outside of eminent domain. I don't think anyone has the appetite for, for something like that right now. Nor do we have the time, the time of this. The reason I put those slides together. Is to, to enunciate to everybody that this is a critical thing and we're still seven years away from it. So I, I, I'm kind of at a loss at this point.
Mr. Wells.
Your hand is up, sir. Just one final question, Sean. So I see that you anticipate, you'd like to go for the. From override in twenty four, twenty five? And then we wouldn't begin paying it, we wouldn't begin paying any debt on it till construction actually started. We have to, you, I take it you had one on cool design and all that. Am I correct? So you, you want to take a similar path that the fire station building committee is on now.
That is, that is, that is correct. Essentially do, do a, a small bond to get design going early on. And then roll that into the over, override later on. So we were working with. Amy Dexter, you know, the question originally was, you know, how, my main thing for this. And the reason I want to get the land under agreement, you know, for us, for lack of a better word, to stake claim to it. Is to start looking at the financial component of this. This, that's good, that's the bigger hurdle here. The land right now, this, this is, for lack of a better word, easy. The timelines that are associated there, there are different things that go into those. And we want to start studying that as a committee. We spent the past three years looking to find land. This is representing the best option to you. It's not, it's not perfect, but it's our best option. The stuff going forward for the cost of this, the longer you wait, the more it's going to cost. So, you know, there's a number of dominos in play here and, you know. Essentially right now, you know, this, this is critical from a financial point of view and from a children's point of view. So. You know, I, I, I look to, you know, the, the boards of the town, us as a committee, we have done everything we can do. We're, we're at, we're at our end. You know, I mean, I, I don't know where we go after this for land or what, what, what to propose.
Don't give up.
We're getting there.
This isn't easy though. There are two easy things in municipal governments. We call the meeting a order or we have a motion to adjourn. Those are the two easy things we do there. There are a lot of difficult things that we realize. And you've laid a pretty solid and detailed road here for moving forward. So thank you for all your efforts.
Ms. Collins, did I see your hand? Did you have another comment or question? Anybody else on that? Sean, thank you very much. And I'm sorry, Mr. Zulus.
So, so I, I think the question for us is whether we want to take action. And whether we want to support this article. Sean pointed out, this is the culmination of two and a half work, two and a half years of work of this committee. This is the only option. There is no plan B. The next step, you know, Sean expressed his frustration, but the next step is to start scoping up, scoping out trailers. And to put kids in trailers at the elementary schools. And we'll probably have to do that for a period of time. But the longer we wait, the longer they're going to be in trailers. And that is not a good option. And it's not good for the town. And so, so it seems to me if we're, it, it would be, it would be useful for the committee. And it would help Richard Sean for not, not giving up. If this board is ready to, to support this article and to vote to support this article. So, so that I think is the question for us, whether we want to take action now and vote to support this article. I know the Conservation Commission hasn't acted yet. But, but that doesn't mean that this board can't show that it supports this land swap.
I'll make a motion tonight if. Colleagues agree to it, I'll make the motion. I, I just, Arthur, do you think it'd be prudent for us to wait till the ConCon meets? You're muted. He didn't say anything, Mike. I'm going to make the motion.
I'll second it. I'll second it if you make it.
So.
I had to go unmute. Ms. Collins had her again, though.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, you know, I, I, I'd like to vote for it. I, I would just like to see the next i- iteration. Because I, I, I guess my concern is to make sure that the questions that the ConCon had are answered. And everybody feels comfortable. And we have. We do have time to, to vote on, on some of these. So if, if, if other people could be comfortable with that, I would appreciate waiting. But I understand if people don't want to wait as well.
I think with the presentation completed, we might call back Katie, our chair.
Mr. Vice Chair, hold on, not yet. I'm not done yet. My hands up.
I'm sorry. I see you there. It's in the light, Richard. So.
I know it. So my question is. When did you say the ConCon meeting is, Arthur?
It's a week. Oh, it'll be next Tuesday night, a week from last night.
I am ready to make the motion right now.
The following night.
Michael, would you, would you wait to want to wait? Let's schedule what for the thirteenth? Want to put it on for vote for the thirteenth?
Well, I, I don't know what changes. And, and it certainly, I think it would be, if, if this board is willing to support it. I think that's an important step. And, you know, I, I, I think the warrant committee is waiting for what, what this board has to say. And I'm not sure what changes. I'm not sure what the questions are. There are, there are some technical questions. But in terms of the concept, the general concept of this article. And whether we support the concept of, of swapping the Gile Road land. For those other parcels for use. The Gile Road land for the uses of school and swapping those other, other parcels for use of, as, as protected conservation land. That's the concept. And I'm not sure that, that, you know, the Conservation Commission has their due diligence to do. And they, that's, we're not going to get into their level of due diligence. That's their job. Our job is to decide whether we support the article as written in the concept. And I understand if people aren't comfortable. I'm not sure what changes. And it's, I think it certainly could help if, help if we, if we were willing to support it.
Mr. O'Rourke, your hand was up.
Yeah, I, I, just a note for the warrant committee. I was on there earlier. And they were kind of awaiting to see what came out of this board. And I told them, you know, I would attend this one, give my presentation and kind of relay it back. Whatever outcome came from this. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Hey, Mr. Wells, you're in the floor, sir. It's the vice chair that just made up my mind. I'm going to make a motion to support this article.
If I may, should, with the presentation cleared, should we bring back the chair? Ms. Collins.
I guess so.
Mr. Doyle, I'm accused on this matter, so I, I'm not going to vote. So I'm going to stay out of the discussion of the article. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Appreciate that. Mr. Wells, back to you for your motion. Someone will make a motion that we support the articles presented by the school building committee.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any discussion, please? Ms. Collins.
I guess I'm just not clear what happens if the Conservation Commission doesn't vote unanimously. Because my understanding, and maybe I've. doesn't vote unanimously because my understanding and maybe I've misread Article ninety-seven um is that uh it wouldn't be eligible. You know, that that the E O E A you know, would wouldn't let us move forward. So I guess that that's my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. O'Rourke.
Yeah, on on that note, that that was addressed last night by Town Council at the ConCon meeting that we're at. Um it not to speak for him, but essentially what it was was uh that's a policy of Article ninety-seven for the state. Um, one other thing to note, too, that we, I've been working this, I I've not gone rogue on this myself. I've been working with Town Council, who is also working with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So we've all been working together on this. They're aware of the land that we're putting into the swap. Uh while they can't say blatantly that they support it, they haven't originally, the original, give you a quick timeline. Originally, when we went to them, we were looking at only Guile Road and the Randolph Ave swap. We, that wasn't good enough for them. So we added Herrick Drive to sweeten the pot, if you want to put it that way. So once we hit that threshold with them, we kind of, lack of a better word, got the thumbs up or, you know, you're there. And the main thing that came out so further, what happened was Kevin has talked to him further about the unanimous vote as part of that policy. That was not a concern based on what was relayed last night at at the ConCon meeting. So while it's not law that it has to be a six oh vote, it's a policy. And that policy is for them to use as they're reviewing this article as it goes before them. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. That that's hopeful. Um I I still do have I I thinking to do on this, but I appreciate that that, you know, people need to vote.
We have Mr. Freitag and Mr. Zulus. Mr. Freitag?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I just wanted to clarify one point on the the um the point about the unanimous vote. That's in the policy and I've reached out directly to E E A to find out whether or not something that they are that is something that they still require or something that they seek in their policy. Had a direct answer back in on that specific issue. Uh but I reached out to them last night during the meeting to find out what the position of the E E A would be on that issue.
Mr. Zulus, thank you, Mr. Freitag, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Let me suggest this. Um i- i- if if we as a board support this in concept, it seems to me we can vote to support it. If we have a new fact that arises, i.e. a new fa- a vote from the ConCon at some point, they may vote next week. We don't know that for certain, but if we have a new fact, it seems to me we could take another vote and change our, change our view based on what we hear from the from the ConCon. Now, if we hear if we, if we, if we hear what we want to hear from the ConCon, maybe there's no need to change the vote, but if there is a new fact that comes in, we could always change our vote. So so uh my view is if 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 we support the concept, then then um then it's appropriate to um to take the vote. But I understand if people are uncomfortable and uh but but it seems to me that it is an important thing to uh, is important thing to do.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I was just gonna say I concur with that. Not upset.
Hey, so uh do you want to frame your motion again, Mr. Wells, just so that everybody has a clear understanding, please?
So I make a motion that we support the article as presented to us by the School Building Committee, School Building, yeah, School Building Committee for the May and October.
Hey, that's the important point, that this vote will be in support of the article. Any further questions or discussion? Then I'll take a roll. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
We got one little win today, Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions or comments, Mr. O'Rourke, before we turn to other business?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being with us this evening. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. We're awaiting the return. We had a representative from the Collins Center came to our meeting but stepped out and is going to be dialing back in. So why don't we continue on with the town meeting articles and then we'll go back to the town administrator article. We have all of the non-standard budget articles on our agenda this evening for discussion and a vote if we so choose. We have voted some of them already. The one that I thought we may want to discuss is the citizens petition on Algerian Corner. And just to give an update, um Mr. Doyle and I were at the Warren Committee meeting on Monday evening, along with the Public Works Director Chase Berkeley and Town Council. Mr. Burke, who's the main proponent of the citizens petition, addressed the Warren Committee on his perspective on the article and we Mr. Berkeley, Town Council, and I spoke regarding what the article actually seeks and what some of the issues with the language are. And with Mr. Freitag here this evening, it may be helpful for the rest of the board to hear just a brief summary of what he explained to the Warren Committee. If we could see if we want to vote on this article, we could also take up any other articles. It is eight thirty-eight, so we've we're already close to two hours into our meeting. We have a lot on our agenda plus an executive session. So um if that's agreeable, why don't I ask Mr. Freitag to give us an update on the Algerian Corner in in his perspective on the on the language in um Lyndon Appleby, do you have the article that you can put up on the screen? Well, well, Mr. Freitag is talking. If you could share your screen, that would be helpful. Good evening again, Kevin.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good evening, members of the Select Board. This is Kevin Freitag from the Office of Town Council and I'm as been asked to address this article, Citizens Petition Regarding Algerian Corner. I'll try to keep my remarks brief. But suffice to say that my review of this article is uh is that the citizens petition is asking Town Meeting to direct the Select Board to do something. In the first part of the article, it is to authorize the Select Board to prohibit any change to Algerian Corner from its present condition and use. Said use to be consistent with the intent of the grantor as set forth herein for open space and for the use by children, notwithstanding normal care, maintenance, and beautification to the space. And then the third piece is additionally to prohibit the use of Algerian Corner as a stormwater retention area or any other D P W project without a vote of Town Meeting. As a matter of law, under Chapter forty, Section three of the General Laws, all real estate or personal property of a town, not by law or by vote of the town placed in the charge of any particular board, officer, or department, shall be under the control of the selectmen except as otherwise provided in this section or Section nine, Section nine not being applicable to this discussion tonight. The that section of the law says that if you, if there is town-owned property, unless there's some specific by law to the contrary, or some specific vote to the contrary, that town land is under the control of the Select Board. It is also law and has been law in this Commonwealth for at least a hundred years that a legislative body cannot compel the executive branch when the executive branch is acting within its exclusive power. In other words, Town Meeting cannot tell the Select Board to do something that only the Select Board has control over. Specifically, think of this in terms of hiring an employee. That's within the Select Board's control as perhaps delegated to the town administrator, but it falls to the Select Board in the first instance. Town Meeting cannot order the Select Board to hire someone. Town Meeting also cannot direct the um the Board of Selectmen to take a certain amount of land or uh go forward on a taking of land in the first instance. Uh it can only authorize the Select Board to do so, but it cannot force the Select Board's hand um after that initial authorization. So sort of understanding that framework, that analysis, I then looked to the language of this article and it seems to me that the article is saying to Town Meeting to do two things. In the first sentence, to authorize the Select Board to prohibit any change to Algerian Corner from its present use. Well, the Select Board already has within its discretion the right to prohibit any change to Algerian Corner to the extent that it believes any change is taking place, or even if it it believes a change is taking place. It's already within the control of the Select Board. So to authorize the Select Board to do something that it already has the authority to do uh to me seems to be be to be confusing and and not really consistent with the role of Town Meeting. I I also look at the second sent, this, the third sentence of this article, which says to prohibit the use of Algerian Corner as a stormwater retention area or any other D P W project vote without the vote of Town Meeting. Well, now, this is taking a more direct, it's not authorizing the Select Board to prohibit something, but it's telling the Select Board. It's saying that the use of this land shall be limited in some way or some uses shall be prohibited. Again, the determination as to the use of that land, so long as it's under the control of the Select Board, is up to the Select Board. And it is not proper for Town Meeting to tell the Select Board uh how to exercise its control over town-owned land. The second sentence of the article um seems to me to be saying that the that the land should be used consistent with the intent of the grantor. This sort of harkens back to this idea of land being given to a town and the town holding the land as a trustee. Think Governor Stoughton Farm. Land is given for a purpose, it must be used for that purpose. There are ways that the that that a municipality may seek relief from that original intent, but subject to that, it's it's bound by the intent of the grantor. The same is the case here, to the extent that there is some, that there was some intent or that there is some demonstrable intent regarding this particular land, then the town would be bound to that intent. And so again, it's not, it doesn't seem to me to be prudent for Town Meeting to say that the Select Board, you must obey the law. If the law is you're bound by the intent of the grantor, so be it. The law stands on its own and it's not for Town Meeting to come um to to an opinion or a conclusion or or some sort of an order to the Select Board to follow what the law already is. Um so that that is my sort of my analysis of this article. Um you know, we just recently at Town Meeting uh votes by which Town Meeting authorized the Select Board to petition the legislature to issue an on-premises um liquor license. The Select Board, if it wanted to, could walk away from that request. It's been authorized to make the request, but you can't direct the Select Board to make that petition to the state legislature. It's just a, it's a separation of the of the different branches of the government at the, at a town level between the legislative and the executive. And in my opinion, this article crosses that line, particularly to the extent that it says that it prohibits the Select Board from making a decision. Uh it just seems to me to offend that basic policy and therefore I don't think that it is permissible. And now I'll I'll leave it at that. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Town Council? I I hearing none or seeing none, does, would anyone like to take a vote on this article this evening? I indicated to the Warren Committee that that we may vote this tonight, um and I'll report back to them if we do. I I think all of the members of our board know we're waiting on the opinion from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs that Public Works through the Town Council's office has requested. So um in terms of the merits of the project at Algerian Corner, which is not before it was in the article, the Warren Committee had some questions around that and we explained that we're waiting on an opinion. Would anyone like to offer a motion? Or does anyone prefer not to vote this article tonight? Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I think it's pretty clear from what has just been articulated to us from Town Council where our position should be on this. I think that we should be against this article just based on authority and jurisdiction of this board versus Town Meeting. I think we should probably vote not to support it.
So is that a motion, Mr. Wells?
I will make it in the form of motion, Madam Chair. I'll make a form, I I motion not to support this article.
Second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Zulus. Mr. Zulus?
I agree with the, I agree with Richard.
Okay, any other discussion? You're none? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
No, I'm 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 in favor of rejecting it.
All right. So yeah, so let's clarify that. So.
I was just gonna ask, that was my, that was gonna be my question.
Motion, it's to recommend a no vote on this article. That's what I.
That's correct, Madam Chair. We should be voting yes on my recommendation for a no vote on this out. So that would be yes.
Okay, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you. Um let me, before we go on, let me ask, and and thank you to Lyndon Appleby for displaying that. Are there any other articles that anyone would like to talk to? And I see that we have Mary Flanders Acardi from the Collins Center here. So um why don't we just see if there's any other art, any other may Town Meeting warrant articles that anyone would like to discuss and we can then go back to them after we go on to item seven. Anything tonight? All right, then, seeing none, and it's getting late, why don't we go on to item seven? Which is the town administrative search process and we'll move um this, I hope I'm saying their name correctly, Ms. Acardi from the Collins Center, and we're also joined again by Town Council Kevin Freitag. Uh good evening, Ms. Is it Acardi, my pronouncing?
Acardi.
Acardi, thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming in and joining us tonight. We know you had him in another community earlier.
That's all right.
So we have two items on. What is approval of the agreement that we we'd already selected, the Collins Center, and we needed Town Council to finalize the language of the agreement? So um we have the final version of the professional services agreement tonight, and we also placed on the agenda guidance for the screening committee so that we might have any initial thoughts by members of the board, knowing we have some turnover coming up on the board. Um and Ms. Acardi would be, I believe, the point person or the representative from the Collins Center who will be working with the town, the board, and the screening committee as we go through this process. So we also wanted to welcome her just as a meeting greet for the board and um to get to get to know the members of the board. At least two of us will only be here for another meeting after this. Um we'll have two new members later in April. Do you want to say anything, Ms. Acardi, about um about yourself or your process?
Yeah, so let me just start. Um I'm so happy to be here. I'm glad it worked out for tonight. I know you're on a tight schedule, so um it worked out well that my meeting in Northborough was at seven and this is now, so it's perfect. And um so I'm Mary. I lead the H R practice for the Collins Center for Public Management. If you're not familiar with us, we are a center within the McCormick School of Government at UMass Boston. And our whole mission is to help municipalities and public agencies be better, whatever that takes. Um I've been with the center twelve of its thirteen years. My background has been in all municipal and public sector um H R and labor relations. Uh the job I was able to quit eighteen years ago was the H R Director for the Town of Watertown. And um I had a third child and daycare was going to kill me. So I uh quit my job and was home with my kids till they were all in school and then I worked part-time and now I'm paying for college and they are, you know, eighteen, twenty, and twenty-three. So um uh love what I do, happy to be with all of you. I go to the Wayback Machine with Carol Blute in the Mass Municipal H R Association. Um love her dearly, always had the best manicures and um anybody who knows her knows that's true. And uh so we're thrilled to be with you. I will be the lead um on this project. I'll be assisted by my colleague Libby Corbo, who has a background in um municipal law. She worked for one of the larger firms, not the fabulous Murphy Hesse, but um you know, another one. And uh so she and I will be partners i- in crime in this and we're just thrilled to get started. I can walk through the proposal that you've already agreed on, or I can just open it up for questions and really just help you deliberate. I know you have a full agenda tonight.
Well, um, thank you. Rather than watch the proposal, since we did cover some of that in our last meeting and it's getting late for everyone, uh why don't we see if any members of the board have any comments or questions? Uh we the, we we do have a screening committee appointed. I think you know that. You sent over some additional ideas for a charge. Uh we could take a look at that and and see whether there's any changes we want to make or incorporate anything additional. But um the members of our board, Mr. Zulus and Mr. Wells, are members of the screening committee. So
Wonderful.
We'll be working more closely with them than than some of us. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions or comments for Ms. Acardi?
She had me a Carol, she had me a Carol Blute, Madam Chair.
Same here, Mr. Wells. Same here, Mr. Wells. We do have the agreement to approve this evening, and I, and I think we'll want to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract, although we, that probably won't happen until Monday. That's probably the earliest that we can get the signed contract. But would that present any problems, Ms. A. Cardy, if we got this over to you early?
Oh, no, not at all. And we work in good faith, and we know where you live. So, you know, what our first job will be is to set up a call with whomever you are telling me is my liaison on the project. So I would like to do an email and call with that person, and then really map out the screening committee members, have an initial meeting with them, and also work with you all in, you know, the logistics of developing the profile. So I think maybe I don't need to wait for a contract to have that first call with whoever, and it might be one of the select board members, or it might be somebody at town hall. So, or it could be the attorney. You tell me who I'm talking to, and I'll, I'll do it.
All right, let's see. So Mr. Doyle and then Mr. Wells, with hands raised. So let's go to Mr. Doyle. Mr. Doyle, you're still on mute.
Thank you for that too, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mary, for being with us this evening. I'm sure you have some pearls of wisdom that you could impart to us as this process moves along, but they will start with the screening committee and the two representatives from the select board that are on it. I would be interested in knowing what you see as some of the opportunities in recruiting for a town administrative position, such as that which Milton is seeking at the present time, and some of the obstacles. Could you spend a minute or two on each of those?
Sure. I'm, I'm always a glass is half-full person. So the the empty glass, empty part of the glass is that it's a tough market. We've had a lot of people leave the field. A lot of people came into the field at the same time, and a lot of people left. But it's a better market right now than it was a few years ago, because what happened, probably five years ago, there was a big exodus. And what happened was there were some new people brought in. Those people are now looking for their next step, which I would view that's what Milton will attract, that people who have done a few years. And so that is the other half of the glass, because it's not what it was a few years ago. The, the conversation we will have to talk about, about the market and the salary and willingness to pay and opportunity to pay. That's why we want to take the time to make sure we have the profile right. Because I wouldn't recommend to the town to, you know, just try to outbid people. That's not a good move either. We want it to, we want to find you, you know, the person, not a person, which is kind of our logo these days. Because we want them to be interested in working for you, not just looking for a job either. So we do say an opportunity is to maybe put on a different lens, as I adjust my glasses, to say do they absolutely have to have been a town administrator before? Could they be dynamic department head? You know, do you absolutely require municipal experience? These are the questions I'm gonna ask you. And, and we will guide you i- in that. I think in Massachusetts, it's very difficult to step into a town administrator role without having been a public official in a municipality. I think those, and, and, and people do, and I may be on the wrong side of an argument. Some people say, well, it's about competencies. It's also about culture. And how many people have we, and I'm not saying it can't ever work, there's been successful private sector people moving into municipalities. But usually those are people who have been fools like you to be on boards. You know, it's been a FinCom person, it's been a long-serving, you know, select person. So we never say no to anything, but in, you know, in my humble opinion, unless you're a large organization, you're not small by any standards across Massachusetts, but, but you're not as large as a place that could take a risk on somebody who maybe had great management skills, but had tons of staff working for them. So you're in that middle, and I wouldn't necessarily recommend you tar, you welcome all applications, but you, I, I wouldn't necessarily recommend, you know, going for the equivalent of municipal experience, because I'm not sure that's the right fit for you of the little bit of work that I've, I've done and what I know about Milton.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I was gonna make a motion to approve the contract. Consulting services with the Collins Center, UMass authorized the town administrator to sign that.
Second.
Okay, let's, let's take that up. Now we have motion to approve the contract and to authorize the town administrator to sign it. Does anyone have any comments on that motion? And then I'm gonna come back to what Ms. A. Cardy was just saying. Okay, let's go to vote then. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. So we, we'll get that signed and get that over to you early next week, Ms. A. Cardy. But I think you hit the nail on the head. And one of the issues that we have in the office is, is lack of, I think, adequate staffing. You know, it, it's, we're, we're pretty thinly staffed in town, in select board office and in town hall. It's interesting that you mentioned, you know, perhaps an assistant town administrator is looking to make the next step up. Speaking individually, my, my thought has been we're looking for either a town administrator or an assistant town administrator who's got some experience and is ready to go to the next level. Since we have, we put guidance for the screening committee on the agenda, and I, I purposely put it on because I only have one meeting left after this, and so does Ms. Collins, so will be an opportunity for us to share some thoughts this evening. But I, I would be open to, as you put it, a dynamic department head who might, might be the right person. We did have a department head who was a former town administrator, David Colton, who came for the DPW and became town administrator. So municipal experience, I think, is important, and I would hope that we can get someone who has some pretty significant experience, if not as a TA, then as an ATA. Because I think that's what Milton really needs going forward. There's a lot of budgetary challenges. We have a lot of building projects, we have a lot going on housing and a lot of economic development challenges. So I agree that we wouldn't want to foreclose a private sector person who might really be have some great experience, would be the right candidate, but I, I think municipal experience really is very important and would be what I would be hoping to prioritize. So those are my thoughts on, on the guidance and on what we might be looking for. Does anyone else want to weigh in on this stage? I know we have to develop a profile. Many more opportunities to input, and we should have some departments at an employee input as well as we begin the process. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I have a bit of a list, which I, I'll mention things here, but I'll, I'll also submit in, in writing, and it's not prioritized, but I agree with you. I just don't understand how somebody could come to Milton without municipal experience, because we are thinly staffed, excellently staffed. What people do with, with what we've got is really it's just, it's something to really be proud of, but there are a few things that I think are also really important that I've seen in, in my, my four years on the board, not, not an extensive period, but you know, that negotiating experience can be important. And I, I realize that can be learned with some support, but, but that, that would be good to have excellent research, analysis, and writing skills. I, I think would be very nice to have, and management, personnel management, and also professional development, you know, a- as, as something that is, is a focus. And yeah, that going along with the municipal experience, that demonstrated understanding of municipal finance and, and budgeting, I just think is is so important for a municipality that has a structural financial deficit. So I, I won't go on with my list, because it is late, and thank you for, for listening.
I would be happy to, particularly for the, for the two smart or crazy people who are leaving, to accept an email with some ideas, and I can synthesize that in when I'm developing a profile, because your lens and your input will be really important as we move forward, and I would greatly appreciate that. I don't know if you know that David Colton is a dear friend, and he's a colleague at the Collins Center now. And so
I was thinking of him myself, when you brought him up, that David was our DPW director and then became the town administrator to a great job.
And not to make a broad brush, DPW, they do a lot of purchasing, they do a lot of finance. Planners also do a lot of grant work. You know, the skill set i- is there. So I would never shut the door on anybody like that. But the leadership and management piece needs to be there. So we don't worry, we target them.
And I, I guess I would just say, we are looking to cast a, a broad net.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there are other issues that are important as well, that we want to be sure that the search is representative, the committee is, is a diverse committee and is representative of the town. We we want to try to attract as many candidates as possible in different backgrounds. And, and I think the process is also important, and I'll, so I'll take you up on that opportunity to send you some.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and what's great about your municipality is your location, and there's the greater opportunity for more diverse outreach than Western Mass per se, you know. So you're really in, in a, in a great location. We did the town manager search just a short time ago in Randolph. We were very successful in, you know, our efforts there. So yeah, so we're excited.
And we also want to move expeditiously. She, she's not here tonight, but I want to say, you know, we have Anne Marie Fagan, who came back from retirement.
I know, yes.
I know, I'm sure. And is doing a wonderful job, but is not looking to, to be here well into the, the next fiscal year. So so we're looking to try to move expeditiously. Your question was about your contact. I think we should probably leave it up to some combination of Mr. Freytek, Mr. Zulus, and Mr. Wells, and Ms. Fagan to, to figure out when the committee's going to meet and, and what the, what the contact with you should be, what the process there is, unless either of them want to speak to this this evening.
I'll touch base with, with Anne Marie on Monday then, you know, because sometimes it helps to have somebody in town hall, you know. So as a kickoff point, I'll start with her, and we'll go from there.
Okay, great. Mr. Zulus has his numbers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. A. Cardy. We, we were thinking about trying to get a kickoff meeting this week, but we didn't get anything posted as yet. And I wonder if it makes sense to try to get, and I need, Richard and I need to get together on scheduling and all that, but I wonder if it makes sense, since we have to post 48 hours in advance to try to get something posted for early next week.
Sounds perfect.
So Richard and I'll get out, get together on that and try to figure out what works, and, and try to get the rest of the committee going. If we I, I think, so tomorrow, the earliest we could post would be from Monday, so, so maybe Monday, Tuesday. So we'll, we'll try to get something at least posted for that.
I would, so I can't do Tuesday. I can do the other days, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday. Monday might be tight for you, you know, but, you know, we, we can make it work. I would like to be, I have, you know, two colleagues that can cover for me, but for that first meeting, I would kind of want it to be me selfishly, so that we hit the round with, hit the ground running with the team that's gonna be in place, and it's not gonna be a big difference between Monday and Wednesday.
We have a board meeting Wednesday, so that, that would be
So it could be Thursday.
She had it ahead of the meeting.
You could double, you could double dip. That's up to you. Clearly, you don't mind meeting late.
All right. Well, why don't we figure the logistics of that out?
All right. That sounds like a plan.
All right. Does anyone have anything else before we let Ms. A. Cardy leave and move on to the next item? All right. Then thank you so much for joining us, Ms. A. Cardy. And I should point out Paige Appolito, who's here tonight, is sitting in for the town administrator, is our HR Director and town administrator.
Been corresponding many times before.
Okay, great. So you'll, you'll have an opportunity to, to be interacting and working with Paige Appolito as well.
All right. Well, I wish the two of you who are leaving the board all the success and free time, I hope.
Thank you very much.
All right. Take care. Be well.
Coming in tonight. We appreciate it. Okay, we have Karen Prevall back with us, and we have some finance items on the agenda. I'm hoping we can move fairly quickly through these, since we did meet one morning last week, and there was some progress made on some of the finance items at that joint meeting. So why don't I turn it over to Mr. Zulus as the Chair of the Finance Committee and Ms. Prevall? And Karen, thank you for staying late. I'm sure you had a long session with the warrant committee, so welcome back, and thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I, I think we have item eight, which is before item nine, which is the capital improvement. I wonder if you want to take, do you want to take that first and then move to the Finance Committee report?
That would be fine with me. If we're going to vote the total, then that's, you know, I, I'd be recused on the bonding aspect of it, but there's a lot more than just bonding here. So if it's the total, you know, unless we're gonna get into a detailed discussion of the bonding, and if we are, I'll recuse myself. But I think we've been through this many times at the finance meeting, so I'm not sure how much there is to discuss. Is it just a quick vote on this item tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I think we're just ready to vote. I was Karen disagreed. I think we're just ready to vote the total.
Okay.
That was good. I just made the motion after second, and then Karen could do the discussion.
Okay, I didn't even hear the motion in seconds. So that's good. All right. So you just approve this as presented, I believe, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Would you like to add anything, Ms. Prevall?
I did, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to make sure that the amount that we're voting is a $7,147,020, because there's some projects that were, that aren't going to be appropriate, because they are being funded through the ARPA funds. And there's a project for the cemetery that's coming on revolving that doesn't require an appropriation.
Okay, so that is different than what I have. Could you say that number again, $7 million?
It's $7,147,020, and that's what is gonna be in the warrant, because it covers the, and I can share my screen, the amount that is gonna be bonded. ARPA funds are not included in the appropriation vote, because they're covered as a grant.
Yes, feel free to share your screen if you want. I know we have free cash in here as well, and response.
Okay, one moment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to amend, just as a friendly on my motion, my motion will be for that amount, $7,147,020.
Okay, thank you. Understood.
And to clarify, which would have been higher without the ARPA funding?
That's correct.
That's correct. So I can explain this in a little more detail. You have $6,154,000 that was authorized. It's gonna be bonded. That was approved by the Capital Committee. And then in terms of the non-bonded capital items, you have the accessible van, which is gonna be covered through the premium. You have the animal shelter, $231,970. That's a portion of that's gonna be paid from free cash. You also have the DPW garage, $30,000. That's coming from the bond premium. We have the dump truck of $78,000 that is coming from the bond premium. You also have body cameras. That's from free cash. Jaws of Life from premium, and the lower Guile construction is from, on the premium fund. I just wanted to make one other update, the $30,000, the $78,000 for the one ton dump truck is going to be paid for through the water retained earnings.
Okay. I, I think the lower Guy Field Road, the last one, for $400,000, that's actually largely from free cash, but $78,700 from premium.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. All right. So does anyone have any comments or questions? If not, we'll go to a vote on the motion. Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, just a quick question. Thank you. So I'm, as I look at this, Karen, now the total of Guile Field is 400, and then the body cameras are 162. And I think what we had in the presentation last week for the free cash allocation for body cameras in Guile Road was $483,300. And I think what we had in the presentation last week for the free cash allocation for body cameras in Guile Road was four eighty three, three hundred. And now this amount looks like five, five sixty two. So I just want to make sure I understand. So. Is that been, is that been, is that been revised, I guess is the question.
So lower Guile field, the total project cost is two point four. But a portion of that of four hundred is covered through the ARPA funds. What you were looking at in terms of, we had the, we had four eighty three. That was originally part, we were going to use the capital stabilization. And that was then added to free, to be paid for for free cash. So the free cash number, that four eighty three that you're talking about, what that included was three twenty one, three hundred, which was lower Guile field. Plus one sixty two, which is the body cameras. The reason why we have the two thirty one, nine seventy for animal shelter, because that was added later as the town administrator was putting together the allocations for the free cash appropriation.
So so the numbers that we have, Karen, for free cash that we had last week haven't changed.
No, they have not.
Okay, thank you.
The only diff, the only difference is that the capital projects that were originally put together, we only had seven hundred in the capital project that was allocated. Two thirty one, nine seventy was an additional amount that was added to the animal shelter during the allocations with the town administrator for the appropriation of the two point eight in free cash.
I think Mike's question was the same as mine, which is the four hundred is made up of both the free cash amount and the bond premium.
That's correct, yes.
All right, does anyone have any other questions or comments? All right, then let's vote on the motion. Mr. Doyle. Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Very much. Finance Committee report, Mr. Zulus and Ms. Prevall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, the first item on the agenda is FY twenty three budget. And as you noted earlier, the Select Board was at the Finance Committee meeting on, was it Friday? I believe it was Friday morning. And when we saw the presentation from the Town Administrator and Ms. Prevall. And the Finance Committee voted to support, voted to recommend that budget. And I thought that to approve that budget proposal, which included seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in ARPA funding for school needs, school COVID related needs. And I, I can't remember now whether our, whether the Select Board voted that on Friday as well. But I know that, I know that the Finance Committee did. So do we want to tee that up for a vote by the Select Board as well? That budget, budget presentation?
Make the motion, I'll second it.
Yeah, I'm just looking at our minutes from last week, so it doesn't look like the board voted, so yes.
All right, so, so, so the Finance Committee voted to recommend it. So I will move to accept the recommendation of the Finance Committee to approve the balanced budget as proposed by the, by the town administrator.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wells, any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Wells?
Karen has her hand up, Madam Chair.
Okay, but.
Through you, Madam Chair, I just wanted, do you have a dollar amount? Just want to make sure you have the same dollar amount that's been discussed at the previous meetings. Of the, the total budget of the one twenty three, four fifteen, two seventy five.
Yes, that's.
Yes, that was the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the vote, let's go back to the vote. Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right, ARPA.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps we take these out of order. Nine B Romanet one is the contingency project, maybe contingency funding. Maybe we'll step back just because the, the approval on the Milton Public Schools, ARPA funding relates to the budget that vote that we just took. So perhaps if we take nine B Romanet two, which is the ARPA funding for the Milton Public Schools. And the, the Finance Committee recommended approving a total of seven hundred and seven hundred and nineteen thousand, I believe, let me get it in front of me. Seven hundred and nineteen thousand in ARPA funding for COVID related Milton Public School needs. Just make sure I have the correct number. I had it here a minute ago, I apologize. There it is, yes. So the, I'll correct the amount, the, the, the Finance Committee recommended as part of the budget, which we already voted, two hundred and seventy eight thousand, five hundred dollars as part of the rollover budget for ARPA eligible items in the school budget. And then an additional seven hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty six thousand dollars for ARPA eligible items in the supplemental needs of the Milton Public Schools. For a total of, I don't see the slide with the total, but it is the aggregate of two seventy eight, five and seven nineteen, one eighty six, which I used to have. And if I don't, I will quickly try to add them up, Karen, unless you have that number.
It should come to nine ninety seven, six eighty six.
I'm sure that's the number, it rings a bell. So, so the, can you give me that again? Because I, nine ninety seven.
Nine hundred and ninety seven thousand, six hundred and eighty six.
Six eighty, that's right.
Yes.
All right, so the, the recommendation, recommendation of the Finance Committee is to allocate for school related ARPA needs for FY twenty three, a total of nine hundred and ninety seven thousand, six hundred and eighty six dollars in ARPA funding. The initial, so that's the motion, I will, that's the motion, then I'll add something to it.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I'm, if I may, Madam Chair, the, the thought on that, and Arthur, you can, you can correct me if I, if I misstate this. The thought on that was that we will initially seek county funding, county ARPA funding for those amounts. But as a fallback, we may have to seek the Treasury depending on the timing and how things move. So I think that's where we were on that, Arthur, unless you tell me differently.
That's correct. We kept the window open for a degree of flexibility.
All right, any further discussion? Right, then the motion is for the nine ninety seven, six eighty six. All in favor, Mr. Doyle? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item nine B Romanet one is the contingency ARPA funding. On March first, the, the Finance Committee voted to recommend, recommend for, recommend that this board appropriate an amount of up to five thousand dollars in ARPA funding from the Treasury sources for contingency purposes. And that recommendation is based on the fact that some, there are, there are slight changes sometimes in the estimates that are provided to the county for, for some of these projects. And to give ourselves some flexibility, if there are small changes based on the estimates, we thought it made sense based on the recommendation of the, our Finance Director to create this contingency to the extent that the amounts changed, the amounts change.
Okay, any discussion?
I don't think I made the motion actually, but I'll, but I will.
But I just thought in general, but if you want to make the motion, we can discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I thought you were asking post motion, so.
Why don't you go ahead and make a motion?
All right, I'll do it. I, I, I may need to go get some caffeine because I'm, I'm starting to slow down. I'll, I'll move to appropriate, to accept the recommendation of the Finance Committee to appropriate up to five thousand dollars in ARPA funding from Treasury source for contingency purposes.
Okay.
Any, any questions, any discussion? Sounds like a good idea to me.
All the way, Madam Chair.
All in favor. Mr. Doyle? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item, item nine B Romanet three is the, the discussion that the Finance Committee has had about reporting to town meeting on ARPA funding. We think that that's a good idea. Not sure that there's any action that this board needs to take other than to, you know, generally support the idea that we should, we should ask the, the moderator for time at town meeting to give town meeting a report on ARPA funding that has been appropriated by this board.
And we also want to include in the warrant a written report.
Oh.
That we're giving everybody some advance notice before telling you what's being spent. I think it would be helpful. Mr. Doyle?
I was just going to ask, we had previously discussed, are you this available to the Warren Committee before going to town meeting? They have, what, one more meeting left? I believe.
I'm not sure how many meetings they have left, but we could ask Ms. Prevall to provide to the Warren Committee what she gave to us for ARPA. That would be helpful.
That would do it.
It may have already been done, but.
That'd be great, thank you.
Right, Ms. Prevall?
Up to you, Madam Chair. I believe they have another meeting on Monday. I believe the next Warren Committee meeting is Monday. We have not presented the ARPA projects to the Warren Committee to have it included in the warrant. But I know they haven't, they may be having a meeting on Monday.
Okay, and we could, we can just include it in the warrant, you know, ourselves as a report from the Select Board on the ARPA projects, which we probably should do since it's really within our jurisdiction. And that could take the form of a table with a narrative, we can decide. Maybe the Finance Committee wants to drive that and prepare the, not, not to put too much work on the Finance Committee, but it may make sense for you to give us your thoughts and on how you want it to appear.
I, I, if I may, Madam Chair, I, I think it would probably be appropriate. We, we, we have all, we have the votes that we've, we've taken and we can just, we can, we can create a narrative based on those votes along with the table, seems to me.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else on this item? Before we go to Romanet four, which I think might already be completed.
I, I believe we voted this on Friday. I hope we voted it because it rolled out, we voted on Thursday because it rolled out on Friday. And, and we have to, we have to acknowledge the efforts of Karen Prevall in this because she has really driven this project and done a great job. And, and hopefully it will, it will be a big advantage for our, for our small businesses in town to try to, to get some access to this funding to help them out.
Okay, I, thank you, I agree. Do we have any other comments before we move on from Finance? Okay, thank you to the Finance Committee and to Ms. Prevall. I don't think there's anything else finance related that we need you to say for, so it's, it's getting late. If you want to leave, Ms. Prevall, feel free and we thank you for joining us.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Good night. The next item ten, I'm just going to report out, this was a discussion and potential approval of the bid, acceptance of a bid for the East Milton Library location at three thirty four Edge Hill Road. Unfortunately, we've had a problem with the bid process. So we are going to have to cancel and reissue the RFP, which assured by Town Council and the procurement officer that we will be able to do in very short order. We do have this item on the agenda for executive session later on this evening to discuss the lease. But we did receive a bid from the Art Center and unfortunately, because of a problem with the process, we're going to have to go back up to bid. So it's really nothing for us to act on this evening for item ten. Other than to just, just report that out and let everyone know what we might be doing. I want to see if we should take anything out of order. We do have Mr. Doherty here, who's our Mass Board Community Advisory Committee representative. And I don't know whether he's, would like to speak with the board. So I'd like to give that opportunity where it's nine thirty and rather than staying for another half hour, an hour before we get to that agenda item. So, Mr. Doherty, if you would like to join us, please just raise your hand. It's like someone may already have moved you over to panelists. Thank you to Lyndon Appleby, but that would be item seventeen. I'm sorry, item sixteen, item sixteen are on our agenda is a discussion of the, the Mass Board Community Advisory Committee appointment and position. So I should have asked Mr. Doherty now if we, if he wanted to come over sooner and join us for this item, but.
I, I am here.
Good evening, Mr. Doherty.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair and other members of the Select Board. And, and the reason I'm here is, as I had mentioned several weeks ago to the Chair, I would like to be resigning after three years of effort as the MCAC appointee and with great appreciation for the support of the, of the Select Board. As it happens, in terms of timing, there's a March meeting tomorrow. The only vote that occurred, will occur tomorrow is a very preliminary vote on getting the process started for the fiscal year budget starting in July for the next fiscal year, which, and the next meeting is not until June, which is why this is a time where there's another couple of months before the next meeting where, you know, should the board appoint a new representative? There's time to, to do that. And, you know, I could help get that person up to speed, but there's that, that law. And in the last three years, or two of the last three years, it so happened I acted as treasurer. And soon after I became treasurer, the Executive Director left for another job. There was a administrative assistant, but then when COVID came, that administrative assistant left for another job. So it turned out that the treasurer's role was one that was quite time consuming. In any event, it seems after all of this time, those three years, and the right time for me to step down and given this timing now of a couple of months before the next meeting. And that's, that's, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm here tonight. The major, you're, you're more familiar than, as familiar as I am, more familiar than so many others as to where we are. As you know, with regard to runway four, right arrivals and thirty three left departures, thirty two left is Cambridge and Arlington and Somerville Belmont and Medford and Malden and all that. And we're fully aware that there was both no FAA mandate to provide a set of dispersed paths and use them in rotation, notwithstanding the fact that both the thirty three L communities for departures and the for our arrival effort on our part. And also no political will among municipalities or sections of municipalities that benefited from the shift. So that, that is what it is, it's been a, a long effort. We still have outstanding, and it's not an MCAC matter, but you're fully aware that we do not want a, an RNAF put on over the west part of Milton for runway four left. That environmental process, which with your help, you know, I, I gathered the Congressman Lynch and Boston City Councilors, you, you, the Select Board, Representative Driscoll, Senator Timothys' support, that's still there. And it'll be interesting to see how that evolves and what the decision is. And if that decision by the FAA were to be nevertheless perceived, that can be challenged in court. It's not an MCAC matter and I remain interested in that. But that's, that's really why. But that's, that's really why I, I came tonight is to say that after the three years, I, I would like to move on with respect to MCAC, not with respect to my interest in, you know, trying to help in any way with regard, for example, to that runway four left RNAV opposition. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doherty. And yeah, I can, I can report to the board to, just to confirm what Mr. Doherty said, that he, he did contact me, I think it was even in January, about stepping down. And so we'll need to identify a successor for this role. It's a, it's an important position. It's a time consuming position and thank you to Mr. Doherty for not only serving as our representative, but also on the Executive Committee, the CAC and the, as the treasurer, as you said, taking on a lot of the day to day work in the, in the case of the vacancies, both in the Executive Director position and in the administrative position. So thank you for representing Milton well at the CAC and, and doing all of the additional work for the CAC. Does any member of the board have any comments or questions? Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add that it, it really is the Select Board and the town that owes Mr. Doherty great appreciation for extraordinary effort that he has made over the last three years. As you pointed out, he, he was appointed to the Executive Committee, he was the treasurer. He, he really led engagement with the MCAC, led engagement with the MIT group. And, and for the first time, we were, we were in the game. We had some options. As he pointed out, there were some frustrations in getting those options implemented, not only for us, but for the 33L communities. But, but we, we did move the ball forward, not as far as we liked, but we moved the ball forward. He led the effort in, for an extraordinary response to the 4L environmental assessment. That's ongoing, but it put us in a very good position because our initial response to that, because of Mr. Doherty's efforts, I think was, was really, was really well done, extensive. And, and also during this, during this time on runway 22, we did, we did get a good result for Milton. So it's really been a lot of effort over the last three years, more than we could have asked for reasonably, more than we could have reasonably expected. And, and we've had some, we've had some good result and we've moved the ball forward because of all those efforts. And so we really owe him a great debt of, a great debt of gratitude.
Mr. Wells and then Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo Michael's thanks to Attorney Doherty. This is a difficult thing that Tom has undertaken and worked on, one that many people in Milton understand the pain and the pressure that comes from airplane noise. I don't think they understand how intricate and complicated the road is to provide relief. And, and Tom, you've navigated very well in your three years here and not in, and often not in very good circumstances. So I, I thank you very much for everything you've done and I hope that you will continue to be a wise expert for those working in the future. So thank you again for everything.
And we just, let me just say to, you know, Mr. Zulus and yourself, you know, and the whole board, thanks a lot for the help. And yeah, I think, for example, the, the 4L RNAV will be, it'll be very, very interesting to see how the FAA responds to the specific criteria that we think that they, that they did not meet and did not satisfy and, and what, and what they say with respect to that. So that, that's an open issue that's still there and that'll be important.
Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I wanted to just corroborate what Mr. Zulus and Mr. Wells said. I, I totally agree and wanted to, to add my thanks for the bridges that you built, Mr. Doherty. And even where politically, maybe with surrounding communities, we had made the inroads that, that we'd like. I think it's a beginning and I very much appreciate your willingness to continue beyond the, the MCAC and some of the, the upcoming places that will have an opportunity, hopefully, to move the ball forward some more. And I wish you the best of luck. You were lovely to work with when I was Chair and I really appreciate the time you took with me.
Thanks a lot.
All right, anyone else? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Doherty. And so I hope the meeting tomorrow goes well and we'll, we'll work toward getting a successor. And we appreciate your willingness to have some kind of a transition period and to bring that person up to speed on, on, on these issues and where the CAC is at. So thank you again for everything.
Thank you all. Yep. Good night.
Good night. Okay, why don't we go back to? So we did number 10, so we are now on to 11, which is the policies and procedures. And it looks like we have quite a lot in front of us here, but we've all seen these policies and procedures many times before. So Policy Committee, Mr. Zulus is the Chair.
So thank you, Madam Chair. The first items are on for first reading and, and we do have comments on those from you, from the Chair. So we can, we can implement those as far as part of, as part of the first reading. And these are the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 policies that are on for first reading. And to list those or to, to state those, rather, they are the Select Board Operational Goals and Objectives, Evaluation of Select Board Procedures, Select Board Legal Status and Authority, Select Board Powers and Responsibilities, Select Board Member Authority and Duties, Select Board Membership and Term of Office, Select Board Member Resignation, Vacancies Extended Out, Absences and Unexpired Term Fulfillment, Select Board Member Ethics, Select Board Organizational Meeting, which may be important in the next month or so. And then Select Board Special Procedures for Conducting Public Hearings. And then I would ask that we defer on the final reference, which was financial policies. That'll be something that we'll have to take up later. But those are the, those that I listed are those that are on for a first reading and we can go through them with specific comments on each one. Or perhaps members could send any comments as, as you have, Madam Chair, on those. And we could aggregate those for a second reading.
That might be the way to go, given the late hour. But, but I do think it's worth noting to the, even though we're calling this the second reading on April 6th of 2022, we actually started talking about its early drafts of these policies back in 2018, I think, when, when Tony Farrington was still on the board and shortly after the board went from three to five members. So there, there has been some work done over time and then we, we also discussed many of them earlier in this current fiscal year, so last fall. Does anyone have anything they want to bring up tonight? Or do you want to just submit any comments to Mr. Zulus?
One comment, I'll submit it to Mike.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll do the same. Mine was mainly around the powers and responsibilities. And I thought we had made some changes on that one, but I could be wrong. I'll look back at it again.
I think you, I think I have comments from you on that.
Okay, all right. All right, great. So then why don't we, does anyone else have anything? All right, then why, so why don't we, do we, do we want to move to advance these to second reading next week on the third?
I'll make a motion to advance these to second reading next. You want to do it next week?
I think so, yes. That way we'll have, if we get both the next week, we'll have them replaced before the board turns over.
Okay. That's acceptable, one of them, right, Mike?
Yes, except for the financial policies. That's right.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
So, yes. Second?
Yes, so the, the next set of policies are on for second reading and adoption. We had, as, as the Chair pointed out, we've discussed these over a period of time and we actually had a first reading and, and accepted comments on July 28th of last year. And, and so these policies are on for second reading and adoption. Those include agendas, formats and content, committees of the Select Board, duties of the Chair, or duties of the Vice Chair, duties of the Secretary, executive sessions, Finance Committee, regular and special meetings of the Select Board, policy adoption, which we've been following, but is not in place yet, rules of order and voting method, basically laying out Robert's Rules as governing for the meeting, and public participation at Select Board meetings, the, the other, otherwise known as public comment.
All right, so we, again, we've had actually multiple meetings on these, even though we're calling this the second reading. And I think the last one is very, very times, timely and important to get in place. All of them are, particularly that one. All right, I see Ms. Collins and then Mr. Doyle.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just down the public participation. In numeral one, under one, it says public comment, but then when we go down under two, the second bullet point still says citizen speak, small point, but. Yeah, I, that's it, really.
Actually, number seven as well says citizen speak. If that's just a term I can never get out of my head, citizens.
I know, I, yeah, but as long as they're all the same.
I'll make, I'll make those corrections.
All right, Mr. Doyle?
My appointment, Madam Chair, on committees of the Select Board, the insertion of the article A in the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph. So that reads that administrative comment, comma, a member of the Select Board delegated by the Board to nominate its membership, just to insert the article A if that's appropriate.
Okay.
Then on the duties of the Chair.
If, if I may, just let me make sure where, where that's going, Arthur.
Okay, it's the fourth paragraph?
My, yeah, I got it. Got that, yeah.
I'll see where you have your highlight, Chair.
Yeah.
The A, I think you mean to have a, a space from R to A. I just want to make sure.
Oh, I see. Yes, 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 absolutely. Yes, I got it. I got it. Okay.
Sometimes those get lost.
Yep, yep, I got it.
Duties of the Chair. The, I believe, new number six.
Yep.
Be the public spokesperson.
Yep.
If I may suggest.
Yep.
Regular and special meetings of the Select Board. Just a, a minor observation, and I don't want to be picky, but where it says special meeting, about two thirds of the way down, three quarters of the way down. The second line reads, special meetings of the Board between regularly scheduled, regular meetings. Maybe you want to say something like the Board between routinely scheduled, regular meetings.
Or, or I can just say regularly scheduled meetings.
Whatever, whatever works.
I'll take out the second regular.
I like, I like the latter, yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever works.
Yeah.
Public participation at Select Board meetings. Number six. This is a personal preference. I would, I would suggest striking the word encouraged. So that reads, all speakers are to present their remarks in a respectful manner.
Okay, sounds good to me. I agree with that.
And the last one is duties of the Vice Chair. With, with the body be open to an insertion, second line, we were enumerating here, will act in the absence of the Chair as Presiding Officer of the Board, comma, participate in the agenda setting process, comma, and will perform such other duties as may be delegated. Is that participation in the agenda setting process is. That's it. Madam Chair, do we, we made a motion? Is there a motion here or no?
There's no motion on the table yet. I think the motion would be to adopt these policies.
That's my motion is to adopt these policies.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Doyle, your hand is raised. Is that from the previously or is, did you want to speak?
It's a fatigue factor.
Oh, all right. I just started this hour, 9:48. Okay, here we go.
You're watching that clock, Madam Chair. So I'm watching Mr. Zulus. That's what I'm worried about.
Still have some things to talk about in the executive, the open session. All right, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. It's great to get those in place. So. Good work and thank you to the Policy Committee, which was Mike and Melinda over the last few years working on these and.
Yeah, it's Mike.
It's Mike. All right, well, recently, but you were involved initially, Ms. Collins.
Yes, that's right.
I think Tony might have been involved at one point, too.
He, he was? This is, this is the, this is the Tony, Tony Farr, this is Tony Farrington's legacy. One of them.
All right, well, we'll, we'll let him know we've acted on these. All right, report of cybersecurity. Mr. Doyle is going to give us an update on the cybersecurity meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of ways to pass the line, if I may. First, I want to thank Senator Walter Timmeltie for his very timely initiative with the Massachusetts National Guard on cybersecurity. Remember, he did a presentation before us and following his briefing with the Select Board, he and General Keefe of the Mass National Guard hosted a mound table on the issue at the, in the Massachusetts National Guard's cyber capabilities at the Braintree Armory just a week ago. Milton was well represented by interim TA Anne Marie Fagan, Superintendent Jett and Rob Mallett of Milton's IT Department in attendance with delegates from the towns and school districts of numerous communities, as well as state representatives and at least four other state senators were present. Key findings include the fact that one in six Massachusetts communities have been hit by ransomware in recent years, that the median cost range of a cybersecurity breach is between $60,000 and $1.8 million. That 44% of ransomware attacks in 2020 targeted municipalities and that cyber attacks are increasing. With the municipality space very vulnerable, resources are needed due to cybersecurity and IT limitations. Physical security improvements are needed, network configurations are vulnerable and end of life hardware and software represent problems and I would underscore that. The Massachusetts National Guard has a cyber force resources structured to assist. It's already been called on by a number of our communities as they typically lack cybersecurity expertise and funds to adequately address threats. The primary threat is cyber access to the control systems of municipalities. Pre-incident planning is advised by the communities and engaging the defensive capabilities of the Massachusetts National Guard would be a great asset in that respect. The Guard's objective for communities is to provide sustainable cybersecurity support to assist in building cyber reliance across municipal organizations with the following four recommended goals. Risk-based cybersecurity decision-making and readiness through cybersecurity training. The building of cybersecurity resilience through pre-incident assessments according to state and national standards. Cybersecurity defense program planning and sustaining over the long-term technology best practices. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Great thorough report on what I heard was a very good meeting. So we agree. Thank you to the National Guard and thank you to Senator Timmeltie for hosting this and offering these services to the town. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Doyle? All right, then, thank you to Mr. Doyle, and we'll move on to item thirteen, which is discussion about the housing committee, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. About a month ago, I'm sorry to remember the exact date, the Affordable Housing Trust and Housing Committee met. And among other things, we discussed what was needed now in terms of providing guidance and also strategizing around housing and affordable housing in particular. And discussed what might be the next permutation of of advising and also working on projects. And it was felt that the Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust, while we've worked well together and has made some, some advances, though undercut somewhat in some ways by the 40B activity. And in other ways, you know, those, if they come to fruition, could possibly help. It was felt that it would be best at this point if the Housing Committee was dissolved and the Affordable Housing Trust increased and some members added. Now we have the community preservation funds coming in, and there's also about $644,000 in the Affordable Housing Trust. So it's begun to, to see some capitalization. So there's another piece to this as well. The Fair Housing Committee has actually started meeting with a representative from NA PC about reinvigorating that committee and also not only helping it develop the capacity to hear complaints and hopefully resolve disputes around safety and other matters between landlords and tenants, but also to be that, that broader sort of advisory capacity and spokespeople around housing in general. So the Housing Committee actually will be meeting the coming Monday to give a formal recommendation that we could look at in our April thirteenth meeting. But wanted to prepare the board for this because we hadn't really had a chance to discuss it. But I, I think that the board has been really supportive of the Housing Committee, and it's been a real pleasure to serve in that capacity and, and see some real advocacy from the executive branch on that. So I thank you all on behalf of the Housing Committee.
Well, I think we should acknowledge that when Melinda Collins was elected to the board in 2018, this is one of the things that, that you, Melinda, put forward, is something you wanted to pursue. And you recommended creating this housing committee, and it's really done yeoman's work, you've done yeoman's work, and moved the ball forward, including on things like the Housing Production Plan. So it's achieved quite a bit in four years. And there's some opportunities now to, we'll get on to fourteen, to increase the Housing Trust and also the Fair Housing Committee that you talked about being rejuvenated. So there's some, some new directions for the town to go in. Mr. Doyle, Ms. Collins, and I were all at that joint meeting since we serve on the some combination of us is on the two committees. And but I mainly wanted to acknowledge and thank Ms. Collins for all of her efforts on this topic, and all of her work driving the Housing Committee and leading it over the last four years. Any other, any discussion on this topic? Obviously, we'll put it back on for the thirteenth, then after the Housing Committee meets next week. Okay, then, we'll, we'll continue the discussion next Wednesday. And related to this, item fourteen and fifteen, the, is the board's representative currently, I think all of you or most of you have been on the Affordable Housing Trust at some point. The Housing Trust, following that joint meeting, the Housing Trust did meet, and we, and the Housing Trust is, the membership is Julie Kramer is the chair, Tom Kelly, and Phil Murphy, and Frank Davis, and I are the five current members. Interestingly, it's the select board member that's turned over over the years. The other four have been on since the committee was formed, I think in 2014 timeframe. So there has not been a lot of turnover in that committee. And at the joint meeting, and then subsequently at the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, we talked about increasing the membership, adding some new voices on the committee. So we'll have a new select board member on, the new board will have to appoint one of the, one of the members to the Housing Trust. I would be stepping down from that, but I am interested in staying on the Housing Trust. And I believe there are other people who are thinking about it, and may also, we may have some additional names next Wednesday to consider as well. And the Housing Trust did vote to recommend that the membership be increased from five to nine members. Julie Kramer reported to us that many of the Housing Trusts on the Cape, which is where I think a lot of her practice is focused, have between seven and nine members. So there was general support, it was unanimous. Well, there were four of us there, so it was unanimous vote of the four members who were present to increase, to recommend that this board, which appoints the Housing Trust, consider increasing the membership from five to nine members. Statute just requires a minimum of five.
Madam Chair, would you like to entertain a motion to that effect?
Yes, Mr. Doyle.
Move to increase the membership of the Affordable Housing Trust from five to nine members.
Friendly amendment, Mr. Doyle.
Sure.
To, to attach to your proposed motion to approve Katie Collins to the Affordable Housing Trust.
But I was going to get to that next, but if you want to combine them, I suppose we can do that.
I'll accept. I knew, I knew. Thank you.
All right, so that was a friendly amendment that Mr. Doyle accepted?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, let's just be, I want to be clear that it would be effective as of, I guess, the twenty-sixth. And that's when we would have a vacancy in the select board seat, and then you'll have to appoint a new member to the trust. And hopefully.
What if you get re-elected on a writing campaign?
That's right, that's not going to happen. That's not going to happen. All right, do we have any, any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And I always abstain, I'll be friendly, and this is part of the motion. Okay, all right, thank you. So we'll add, we'll have both of these topics back on the agenda next week. All right, the next item. We've covered seven, we covered sixteen, so we're on to seventeen and eighteen, and this is really for discussion tonight. And actually, Tom Dougherty's comments made me think that maybe there's a different way rather than a committee structure. But what I, what I was thinking was, was our Airplane Noise Advisory Committee has not met since February of 2000, right? They met just a week or two before the pandemic really started and meetings became Zoom meetings. And for a long time, you know, everyone knows during the pandemic, there wasn't a lot of air travel over the town for quite a while. So there wasn't a sense of urgency for that committee to meet, and since then, some of them have stepped down. I've had some conversations with some of the members. But this is an area where it's, there's clearly, as Tom Dougherty said earlier, a four L, the environmental assessment and the four right recommendations that came out of the MIT study, but are now in the hands of the FAA and the communities that are impacted, like us, like the thirty-three L communities, are going to have to really push those outside of the CAC. It seemed to me that this might be an area where there's some benefit to reappointing a committee. It does not have to be the same format, the same size, doesn't have to be as frequently as the past committee, but some kind of a body that would be there, and I would view it, and again, this is only one proposal we can discuss, it would be really to assist the board on some of these items that are still open, some of the issues. So that's kind of what I envisioned it. I was willing to, I am willing to serve on it if the board chooses to appoint such a committee. But I, you know, I think we want to have at least three, maybe five members. And it's really up to the board as to whether we want to have some ongoing support on this issue. Because, part because of all the transition, we have a new town administrator, we'll have turnover on the board, the environmental coordinator is turned over. The CAC has been, the ANAC has been inactive for a while, and those are, and we'll have turnover in the CAC position. So those are my thoughts on it. And after stepping off the board, I'm interested in helping the town in some way on this issue because it's so important to so many residents. And it's a long issue. This is the sort of thing that has taken years, and it's still taking, may still take years. It's not something that we've been able to solve in a short period of time. So, so I put that out there for discussion. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, since we're putting things off for discussion, I think in light of the report we just received from Mr. Dougherty, that you should consider the possibility of becoming the next MCAC rep.
Oh, well, thank you. The challenge with the CAC position is those are daytime meetings, you know. And as Tom said, it's difficult to get someone who's working to take two or three hours out of their time for the for the CAC meeting, the executive committee meeting, the different committee meetings. So that would be challenging. I'd be interested in being on a committee. The CAC position is probably not the right one for me, just because of my other commitments during the daytime. But thank you for, thank you for suggesting that, Richard, and having some confidence in me for that. Well, I, I think we need to find the right person for the CAC position. Mr. Doyle and then Ms. Collins.
Madam Chair, I merely wanted to thank you very much for your willingness to offer to serve in this capacity and in the previously cited capacity. I think that's very, very commendable, and based upon your experience, I will certainly support your appointment to the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee at the appropriate time.
We do have a draft charge, and it may be that members want to spend a little more time reviewing this, and we could always take it up again next week, or the future board could take it up. So I leave it up to you. I think Ms. Collins' hand was raised.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do, I do support this and charge, and I, I know that you, you said, well, there may be some other structure to consider other than a committee. The thing that I like about, as you said, you know, even a committee that has three members, is that you have a lot of deep knowledge. Mr. Zulus also does as well, and it would be good to be able to pass some of that on. And so, you know, at least having a small committee allows for some of that, and allows the select board to have, you know, an advisory arm on this, too, as some of these, these things continue to develop.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zulus.
So I, I agree with what's been said, and I think it's particularly important, as, as Mr. Dougherty mentioned, with respect to the four L environmental assessment that's going to be coming up. We'll, we'll need to have coordinated response on that. And it seems to me the, a newly established ANAC could, could, could take that and to, and assist with that, and to that end. So I think, so I think establishing a new committee with this charge, I'm prepared to move forward on that tonight. Appointing Katie, I think, is a fantastic thing. Perhaps we can get Mr. Dougherty as well, but, but we'll see. And, and perhaps fill out the committee. So I, so I, I think, I think, I'm, I'm prepared to move forward. I think it's a great idea. You know, I understand if people want to wait maybe until the thirteen.
If that's a motion, Michael, I'm going to second it.
All right.
So it's a motion to create the new.
Let me ask a question, if I may, Mr. Wells, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Wells, they are combining in this instance seventeen and eighteen.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was a motion by Mr. Wells, and Mr. Zulus seconded it, is that correct?
No, I think I made the motion and.
You made the motion.
I made the motion, and, and Richard turned it into a motion by seconding it, so. And then Arthur clarified.
We're ready to vote, Madam Chair.
All right, so we'll leave it to Lynn to figure out, I think, so it's Mr. Zulus's motion, Mr. Wells's second, friendly amendment by Mr. Doyle. Okay, and everyone's good with the language of the charge?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then, if no further discussion, we'll go to vote, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain again, Lynn. All right, thank you all. Thank you to the board, because I, those are two issues that I really would like to continue to be involved in some way, to help the future board and the town. So thank you. Next, we have an appointment to the local historic district study committee, and I'll ask Ms. Collins to speak to this. She's been doing a lot of work on this committee and going to their meetings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, technically, I just went to last night's meeting, but yes, I've been trying to work with Larry Lauffer, who's the chair, and to, to, to get the committee staffed up, and also to find a real estate attorney for, we're still looking, so if anyone out there would like to volunteer their services, please contact the select board office. Your, your services are needed. So I did, I did meet with the committee last night, and I think they're ready to get launched, connected them with, with some people from the, well, actually, Pat Lattimore and Chris Hart from the Equity and Justice Committee to talk about how one does a survey well, and, and some other folks in town. And Doug Seibek has agreed to serve on the committee. And as we know, he's a journalist, has wonderful writing skills, and has served in several capacities in town. So he's really a, a good fit for this committee, and he's interested in, in preserving our, our history. So thank you, Mr. Seibek.
So are you offering a motion, Ms. Collins?
I am. I move that we appoint Douglas Seibek. I don't have his address, is it here? No. Local Historic District Study Committee.
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any discussion on the motion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and thank you to Melinda for all of her efforts. Thank you to Doug Seibek for willing, being willing to serve, but also to Melinda Collins for working closely with this committee and the chair, Mr. Lauffer. All right, item twenty, just briefly. Normally, the, the past chair writes their annual report for the board for the to be included in the warrant, in the annual report that's delivered in the spring. Since I'm stepping off the board, I know you're going to have a lot on your plates. I'm willing to do a draft of the annual report for fiscal twenty-two. I believe I won't be there for the last two months of it, but I can follow the meetings, read the minutes, and I'd be happy to work on this over the summer, get you a draft, and then the board can take it from there and make whatever revisions you'd like. So I'm just throwing that out there as an idea. I'm happy to take that on and not leave it with the board to have to delegate to one of the three existing continuing members.
I move to accept Ms. Collins' offer to, to prepare a draft of the FY twenty-two annual report.
Okay.
And all, and all, and all items pertaining there, too.
Why, I don't know what that means.
It's opening it up to more.
Is there a whereas in this somewhere?
All right, I thought we could just do a consensus, but we have a motion, all in favor, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. You know how hard Ms. Collins worked on last year's report, so I, I don't want to shirk my responsibility.
Oh. Yeah, thank you for doing that.
All right, meeting minutes. We do not have March twenty-eighth available yet. That was the joint meeting with the Warren Committee, but we'll have those ready for next week. We have minutes for March thirty-first, which was the joint meeting with the Finance Committee, the only, and Suzanne Bridges took these, she had had a kind of step in and out of the meeting a little bit as people were coming into the office while she was covering our meeting at the same time. So the only changes that I think we need to make are at the very end, where we just have the votes to adjourn. We just need to clarify two to zero for the Finance Committee, four to zero, and the roll calls for the select board. So I think that's just a cleanup change that we can, we can. Does anyone have any comments other than that on the March thirty-first minutes?
I'll vote to adopt, Madam Chair. Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, the next item is the town administrator's report. I'll ask the assistant town administrator if there's anything that she wants to report, or if there's anything that Ms. Fagan had asked be reported. And there may not be, but I just wanted to give you an opportunity if there is.
No, thank you. She didn't have anything.
Okay, great. All right, and thank you for being here this evening, Ms. Appolito.
Thank you.
But Chair's report, we have a draft of a thank you letter to Joseph McGetrick, who's who submitted, who donated to the town the flag of Ukraine that we all had our, or many of us, Mr. Wells could not be there, but we had our photo taken outside of it. It was in the Milton Times last week. There's just a short thank you note to him for the donation to the town of the flag.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
One, just one insert in the last line where it says he's thanking him for his years. Can we put his many years of service to the town?
Okay.
As you know, like yourself, Joe's held many, worn many hats in his distinguished career.
And Madam Chair, I mean, I was wondering if we could insert something somewhere, acknowledging the fact that he was with us that day.
Sure, probably in the first paragraph, we add something. All right, Lynn and I can finalize this then. Are there any other edits or changes or additions? All right, could we approve the letter with those additions to be made?
So I'll move, Madam Chair.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right, just a brief update, the MBTA Community Zoning Comment Letter we submitted, Tim Zerwinski took care of submitting that for us last week. We, at the prior meeting, we talked about the issue that Alex Whiteside had raised was, as requested at the last meeting, I did reach out to Johanna Schneider at Hemman Way and Barnes to get her thoughts because related to a similar issue that they are representing the town on. So we dropped in a footnote into the first, into the first page, just referencing that issue because it was also raised by the Mass Municipal Association and the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association, I think is the right name. So it was basically an issue that Mr. Whiteside asked us to consider, which was that the regulate, the proposed regulations or guidelines, rather, maybe a lot broader than what the statute contemplated. So that, that was submitted, and I just wanted to report back that we did do, that we did do the follow-up. Tim Zerwinski and I both spoke with Ms. Schneider, and we, and we looked at the MMA letter, and we decided to it. There is no other topics that were not anticipated under 23C. Do we have any members' reports this evening, Mr. Doyle?
Not yet, Madam Chair.
Mr. Zulus?
No report, other than now that I'm fueled with my espresso, I'm ready for executive session.
All right, out all those minutes, we have to approve. Ms. Collins?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wells?
No report at 10:17 PM, Madam Chair.
Public comment, we didn't have any public comment this evening, future agenda dates, so we're meeting on the 13th, and then you can figure out, free members can figure out when their next meeting will be after the election.
We're taking the summer off.
You never know whether, maybe a special meeting, but what we do have on for the 13th, though, is the small cell policy. We have a hearing under that policy from, an application from Verizon for a wireless facility. We also have the Equity and Justice Committee coming in for their final report. And I'm sure there are plenty of other things that are on the draft agenda that Lyndon Athalie has not, is intentionally not shared with us yet because she wanted to get through this evening's meeting before we created any confusion, so. Any items for that, please let Lynn know tomorrow, because we'll need to, we want to post that by Friday. Community happenings. There is a bicycle master plan meeting tomorrow night by Zoom. It's, I believe, at 6 o'clock, and Tim Zerwinski and the Master Plan Committee and Cheryl Taggias have all worked hard on advancing that wall. So that may be something that people who are interested in may want to join the Zoom meeting for. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry I disappeared for a moment, but this fell off my desk. I think we received a press release for a Holocaust memorial concert that's coming up at Congregation Beth Shalom of the Blue Hills, and let's see.
On the 19th, I believe.
To the 29th, April 29th, but there'll also be additional opportunities for people to view that there's also an exhibit, so it's, so just for people to look out for that.
Great, thank you. I'm glad you brought that up.
Madam Chair, there is, wasn't there something that came to us today too from the Equity and Justice Committee for something to first parish? I thought that was on the 19th.
Oh, I think that's just an invitation for, I, I didn't, I didn't get to read it. I thought it was an invitation for us. I don't know if it's an.
It is. It is an invitation for us, yeah.
I don't think it's a public event.
Right.
Okay, any other community happenings? All right, then, I'm going to move that we enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, sometimes called Purpose 6, to discuss the lease or value of real property for two properties, the former Kitter Branch Library at 101 Blue Hills Parkway and the former East Milton Library Branch at 334 Edge Hill Road, believing that having such discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, and to approve meeting minutes for various dates in 2021 and 2022 that are listed on our agenda, going back to May 26, 2021. We will not, we will not come back to open session. We would adjourn from the executive session. So do we have a second, seconded by Mr. Zulus? Any discussion? Go to vote, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, so thank you to the public and the attendees. We are now in executive session.